Call the Select Board meeting for October 27th to order. Mr. Steele, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not in good harmony.
No, I was a little slow.
It's supposed to keep up with Rob.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second?
Discussion.
Can we move the hazardous tree policy for review up to right after citizens comments?
I'm not opposed to that. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens comments, items not on the agenda. Mary?
Mary McIntyre, Castleton, Vermont. Just wanted to let you know, the fall night out in Castleton that was held here in this facility was another success. We had $5,000 was what we made. And again, it was a learning experience. Every time, we gain from these fundraisers, this is the second one that we've held, and we learn and we gain. This time around, we knew that we needed to, we needed more chairs. So Friends of Rec bought 100 more chairs. So now Friends of Rec has bought 150 chairs for this facility. These are white ones, a little dressier. So if we have a, and of course, we all know that these belong to Castleton Rec. Just the friends have bought them. So we are well aware of that. So the community has gained because we needed them for this event. We tried something different. We thought shutting off this section of the building just before the women's locker room would give us less responsibility of having to watch so much of the building. The unfortunate part is, is that that cut off our parking a little bit, and of course, people are creatures of habit. So where did everybody go? Even though we had it out, we had it publicized, and we had signs out there, people still parked here. So, and we had a sign posted, "Not entrance," but it wasn't specific enough to tell people where the entrance was. So again, it's a growing pain. Doing it again, I think it worked out well, not having to keep track of the whole building. We had about 125 people in the room. Again, we had Third Place Pizzeria ran the bar. This time, we did not feed everyone. We sold food. And that all went well. No issues with alcohol consumption. That all worked out. And the events were great. We had Castle of Real Estate as our sponsor. We just used one sponsor this time, and that was a sponsor that we hadn't used for cash match. So we're being very cognizant of not hitting our businesses too hard. And the other thing that we gained out of this was buying those chairs. They were used. And we had volunteers come in. They spent three hours cleaning those white chairs because they were $5 apiece. So they weren't pristine, but they're a lot more pristine now. And we had feet, there's someone missing feet. And on this gym floor, it might not be bad, but on our gym floor in the future, not having feet on a chair would be dead from health. It would be a mark. And of course, we don't want to do that. So we had food donated. The other thing, in meeting the man who brought the chairs from, he lent us round tables. Tried to sell us some too along the way, but these were very, very heavy. But still, we made another friend. And he gave some fundraising ideas, actually. And the volunteers, we had, the only thing we paid for that night, and we didn't pay for it, the sponsor money covered it, was the entertainment. One of the entertainers donated, Sam Lewis donated his time. The other two, in full agreement, we paid them. And we paid for the pizza we sold that night. Other than that, everything else was donated. So we just have such a generous community. And we had a lot less people here than we sold tickets. We sold 100 tickets. I don't kind of remember off the top of my head because I wasn't at that part of the process. I was behind the wheel. So, but we're making good progress. We're now at $56,000. We do have a thermometer poster that it taken pictures of. It's not as bulky to put around or to keep up, and we just posted on Facebook that we had photos of. But we, Mark has liked it. He's seen it. I think he put the link next to it. So, yeah, it's been unseen. Maybe I can send the picture to the town so I could put it on their annual page. So, and I think we're getting more and more professional all the time, too. This is what our tickets look like this time. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Mary, thank you.
The other thing I want to say is, that was Micah's first week. Micah came in and introduced himself to us. He worked the event with us. He was extremely helpful. I said to him, "Hey, we need somebody up near the door to greet people and keep them from going down these stairs." I said, "Would you mind doing that? And I can give you a name tag so you can introduce yourself to people." And he said, "Absolutely. Do you have name tags?" And a lot of people don't like to wear name tags. But he quickly took the name tag and, and he helped greet people. He went up to the sidewalk and ushered them in. So it was good. He stayed right with us till the end and hauled the garbage and picked up tables, just like all our volunteers did. So that worked out very well. It was a great introduction to him, and we very appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else?
Thank you, even though I was one outside.
We're learning. We're always learning.
Dick, we got to backtrack. I'm wandering around. He must leave.
Yeah, we missed the approval of minutes.
He can train us.
Ah, thank you. We can do that once we know we're done with citizens comments. Anything else? And we're going to go backwards to approval of the minutes for October 13th. Yes, Roy?
It's in the minutes that I was at the last meeting. I believe I was at the last meeting. I mentioned twice.
Yeah, I got that on there.
We saw you.
Well, I questioned that.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, October 13th, 2025.
Second? Discussion.
Okay. Page one, I don't find anything. Page two, under Recreation Center. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, going down. Trying to get them. It says, "They can't make it in six months." That we should continue cost sharing. I think the "we" is in the wrong place. I think we should be after the "should" and not before the "should." And down to the next to the last line, I'd like to see Town Manager written out rather than TM. On page three, about the access keys. I'm confused in the second sentence where it says, "Coding them to restrict 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. or non-restrict 24 hours." Why would you restrict people from coming in between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.? Am I just reading it wrong?
No, it's supposed to be from 10:00, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. So it's the...
Oh, so it's just the other way around?
Yes, it should be, it should be, it's around.
Then down, three more lines, four more lines. Held by the police department, period. There were no good records as to who was given keys. So now we should have "will" in there. "Will" have records. And...
Since we're right there, anyway, I'll interject. It says S. Spalding asked, not B. Spalding.
And further down, on the same paragraph, the next to the last line, "W.O.N.T." instead of a apostrophe in there?
No, I'm sorry.
Right, W.O.N.T. Down, down to the bottom, under Cops Graham. I'm confused. It says offices are on campus. Are we talking about the college? Because then he went on to say superintendent. So I didn't know if you were talking about the village school or the college campus.
No, this was for schools in the district that the Castle and Police Department has SRO duties to.
Okay, so it's all schools?
Yeah, all the schools that they go to.
Okay. Page four, second line, it says Coventry Landfill. I think it should be a capital L because it's a particular landfill. And then down, 1, 2, 3, 4, it said Garner, question mark. Not quite sure what that question mark is in there for. And now we're down to the Highway Garage. Evan is spelled wrong. It says Eden pulled the wall. I think Evan pulled the wall. The next line, it says Gong instead of going. And I'm confused on the, where the quarter inch plywood went. Pulled out the rest of the wall, ah, one quarter inch plywood and insulated. So I don't know if the 21 quarter inch is pulled off the wall or put on the wall. The last line, in the same section, I think it should be Coombs stated, comma. If we take care of the building, comma, they will cost less to update. And let's see, under cell phones. We're going to 1, 2, 3, three lines down. Highway from the district, I think maybe should be crossed out, but people that live in the area won't see it. Didn't even know I did that. Okay. People around the lake don't have, don't have signal and don't have a landline. I took "so" out of there, but I guess it doesn't matter. It's not going to help them. Down to Town of Hubbardton. R. Spalding, S. What, what is, what entitlement does the Hubbardton have with the transfer station? I think we talked about whether they pay the same or a different price than what we do. The very last word on page four, you should...
Can I just ask, might interrupt you, please? So that $1,500, I've stated in there that that was for Rec. It's not for the transfer station.
It was clear during the meeting that that was the case.
Yes, it was.
So it really is kind of irrelevant. I mean, as far as like...
And the very last word on that page is "they," and it should be "that." Under Managers Report, I think this is something I just don't understand. I don't know if it's wrong. Grant on Moscow was completed. Up with the trans, and they said it was a good job.
Yeah, we were up there with the trans on that road.
Okay, that's it.
Anything to add, Rob?
I just had on that page one, under Citizens Comments, we got to get rid of the Roy Newton question.
Yeah, I don't remember having that conversation last week, or last meeting. I don't know how that got there.
It's probably using an old set of minutes and then taking it out.
Cut and paste. Like a cut. Is that all, is that everything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're going to move on to the hazardous tree policy. So I got to find it in this pile.
It's the largest packet in there, probably.
Yeah, it's this one.
This one, it starts, it should look like this, start of it, and it's that. Should be a paperclip on it.
So it has been, over the last several years, things have evolved to the point where it's been expected, assumed on some people's part that any tree in the town in right-of-way, whether it's on-town property or not, would be the town's responsibility to maintain, remove, et cetera. So we asked our town staff, which would be the, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the highway foreman and the tree warden, to find out what the right thing to do is. And this is what they've come up with, was this hazardous tree policy. So I've had a chance to review it. I'm sure the rest of the board is at least aware it's being proposed. And I would entertain discussion from the board first, and then we'll open it up to the tree warden, the town highway foreman, and the rest of the people present. Thoughts?
I think this is great. I know that has been a reoccurring thought. If, if there's a tree that's in the town right-of-way, but it's leaning towards your house, the town is not responsible for cutting it. That you, the town has a right-of-way, but the homeowner still owns that property. The town has to cut it down if it's threatening town infrastructure, the road, or public safety. But I know this has come up a bunch where people are out measuring how far the tree is from the center line of the road so they know if they have to take it down or the town does. But unless it threatens town property, it's the homeowner's responsibility. And this clarifies that.
I think everyone needs to be understanding that the town has a right-of-way on any road, but the homeowner still owns the land. And that's very clear in state statute. We had a whole ream of paper to go through to verify that. State statute is very clear on who owns the property and who owns the tree that's on the property, and who's responsible to maintain their property. So I'll agree with what Mark said. Anything else?
I just wanted to say that whoever put the packet together, thank you for putting all the statutes and stuff in there because that really did make everything quite clear as to what legally we're supposed to do. I mean, it's pretty, pretty well spelled out in the statutes, so.
Yeah, it would be really handy to have this available to give out to the public when, when this, when a conflict arises.
When we post this new policy, we'll post the statutes with it.
Yeah.
So that if anybody's looking for the policy, they'll also see the statutes. And the link, and the links and the one I sent you by email, the VLCT had a lot of legal opinions on this, which, you know...
Take it as you want.
Yeah. But if someone's looking for, you know, information, there's, this has been a controversy in many, many towns, so they've, it got a lot of attention. So they had a lot of legal opinions on things.
Yeah, nice work to the people that put this together.
Scott and Jeff.
Jeff and Scott, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Wherever we would go to inspect a tree, we would carry one of these with us for the people to see, first of all. It does seem like Mark was saying that people really are out there with their ruler measuring within inches. And calling, if they call me and they don't like what I say, then they call the next guy. So this will eliminate that part of it.
I'm a firm believer in driving a stake in the ground, drawing a line, whatever you want to call it, but this, this is what is the right thing to do, and this is what we will do. And in the future, we have something where you guys have a leg to stand on.
Mr. Chairman, in there, there's a lot of stuff about shade tree plans. And the, and the tree warden, there was a lot of stuff in the statutes. We don't have a shade tree plan, but I think they were, the intent of this was to talk about trees in the right-of-way and that kind of stuff. But in the future, if the Select Board wanted to, if you read through that stuff, there's a lot of stuff in there about preservation of shade trees and stuff like that, too, so.
I think also, we have some trees on Main Street that the town has planted, don't we? So we're responsible, those, I believe, from the way I read it, would fall under the shade tree plan. So whether those were on town property or private property within the right-of-way, if the town planted them, then we would be responsible for those.
I think Scott could...
They're on town property, for sure.
The ones on Main Street.
All the ones I have planted in 13 years are...
Okay.
Yeah, the thing that some people may not understand is that there's two things around town. Some of the area on Main Street is not right-of-way. It's town property.
Right.
Right.
And that makes it very clear. That's one of the reasons we had that gray area with the one that we had taken down in the village, and we split the cost, because that was a gray area where it was alleged it was on town property, alleged it wasn't. And the, so the right thing to do was reach compromise with the owner, which we did, and it's done. So, and one, a tree that's on the right-of-way, but it's not on town property is a different animal.
The other thing with, you're talking with shade trees, also you'd be including the trees that are like Crystal Beach or in the park that are designated, planted for shade. Or, you know, people that are there enjoying the water have a place to get out of the sun.
And those are very clearly on town property anyways.
Correct.
Any more discussion? Does the board wish to take any action?
Wait, I have my hand up.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't see you. I'm sorry, sir.
Bob Crowley from Bonnazine. I've got a few questions and some clarifications that I, I need on this. So you have no shade tree preservation plan currently, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I see in the, let's see, all right. On page one, all right, under Identification, it says, "During routine inspections by town staff or the tree warden." Now, what credentials would, what do you mean by town staff? What credentials would they have to determine if a tree meets those three or is under the prioritization where they can determine low, medium, or high priority? Are they arborists or are they licensed or, or what?
Well, you speak to that, but I, we're talking specifically to highway foreman.
Yeah, so if, if there's something that they're, because they assess stuff outside of a complaint. Say if a resident made a complaint, when they're doing roads, they'll make assessments. And if it looks like it's dead, there's no leaves on it in the middle of the summer, and they can't make a determination, then they'll reach out to the tree warden to get that, that opinion on whether or not this thing should be taken down. They work well together. But it's not, it doesn't take an arborist, I guess, to figure out if there's a, a dead tree there and if it's threatening something, like a roadway or leaning out into the road. So I think that would be the, the standard answer, is they would make their initial assessment, but the tree warden would come in and follow.
Tree warden would do the final decision on it? Okay. All right. Now, on page two, Resident Requests and Reports. Residents can report, you know, the hazardous, the hazardous trees to the Highway Department, the tree warden, or the town clerk, okay? What process is that? Is that a phone call? Will there be, will there be a, a report on the website where they fill it in and everything? Or how can that be tracked? And the reason why I'm asking that is for insurance purposes, and I'll use myself as a hypothetical example, okay? If I'm given notification by the town, all right, that I need to take a tree down that's on my property and possibly on the right-of-way for the town, I go because the average cost right now is like $550 to have a company to take the tree down. I don't have it. So I'm going to attempt to take it down myself, right? Well, if I screw up and it falls onto my neighbor's shed as I'm trying to take it down, okay, the insurance company is going to say, "Okay, what initiated you to, you know, have to cut this tree down?" And if I say, "Well, it was a phone call by somebody, a citizen that drove by and saw a dead tree on my property," I don't think the insurance company, they want a paper trail of, you know, when, when it started, you know, to the time that the accident occurred. So is there any type of formal paperwork or formal submission that would be incorporated into this so that we can have a starting point, you know, of the complaint?
Are you talking on your property outside the town's right-of-way?
No, I'm talking, because I live on Mountain Dure Lane, but my wooded area, a Butts Drake Road, okay? So I'm sure that there are a number of trees that could possibly be in the, the right-of-way, town's right-of-way. Okay, so I just want to make sure that if somebody, because that's a well-traveled road, and if they travel down, because I walked the road, okay, before I came here when it was still light out, and I looked at a couple of trees, and I'm just trying to prepare for the future, if I get a notification, all right, I want to know that if I take it down and screw up, okay, that my insurance company, you know, will be paying whatever damage I may do by trying to take that tree down because I didn't have the money to hire somebody to do it.
So what you're looking for is documentation of the initial complaint.
Right.
Do we have any mechanism for that, Mike?
So if the board would entertain this thought, it, I don't want it to derail the prop, this, the policy. So if you would agree that we use the HAGOV 311 system, so we use it now. It's on our website, and that's, that's to report complaints. You can report anything, like a pothole, tree fell in the road, whatever it is. And we add in there the email addresses and the phone number to the town office and the tree warden and that kind of stuff so that if they're reporting it, they'll have who the person is, name, contact information, and show them that one of the, one of the methods that they can report this to be with either by phone call and email or the HAGOV 311. We use, we get, people use it all the time still. But then I would say, those two gentlemen in the back wanted this policy, so with no good deed, no good deed goes unpunished, that if there's a complaint that comes in, they're going to have to close the loop with the complainant. And I think what they're going to have to do is use that form that was in here and do the assessment. So it's in writing, and they can put it on file, give a copy to the complaint, and whatever method that they want to figure it out. But I think... But, um, I think that, that form is in there for a reason, and if there's a complaint, they do the assessment, they, you know, after they get the, the report.
So in this case, I think Mr. Crowley's saying if he owns a tree that's on his property, not in the town right of way, but the town says, hey, you got to take that down because it's leaning over the road, he would get written notice of that?
If he, if he, if we made a complaint, or we, we would have to document it to show him that.
Yep, if the town crew said, hey, there's a tree up there on private property, but it's going to fall onto the road, he would get written notice of that, that the town was asking you to take it down. So you'd have that paper trail.
Okay.
It wouldn't be just a phone call.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, Mr. Crowley. You're also asking if, if John Doe's driving down the road and he sees a tree he thinks is hazardous, and he calls the town clerk, that there needs to be some record of that phone call.
What, you're right. What started the process? Because, you know, I get a notice and I, and I said, well, how'd this happen? Well, never got a phone call.
And I'm reluctant to put names and, and email addresses and stuff in a town policy. That information should be available on the town website. But the policy says to contact one of these three people. And then you, we have to create the discipline in the town that if they get a complaint about a tree, that it gets documented.
Typically what happens now, if it's 311, it gets passed to the appropriate department. There's a list, like Jeff would get it, um, via the 311. But if it's an email, or, you know, Nedra will say, hey, this person called, they had a complaint at this address, this, you know, how do you get ahold of them? Excuse me. So we'd have an email trail, um, to show where it started.
There has to be something in town, in the town process where that gets documented, and I agree with you. That makes sense. So as long as we put the discipline in place to do that, I would not suggest we put emails, contact information in the policy. Because that can change.
That can change.
On page two, uh, disagreement with the tree warden assessment. I'm, I'm not clear if there are appeal process, if a tree warden comes up and, and says, well, your tree is a, a high priority issue. And it says that, uh, if I have disagreement with the tree warden, I can hire a certified arborist or tree service company at their own expense to perform pruning, limbing, or removal. Well, what if I don't agree that it's a high priority, then I hire an arborist to come and say, no, under the guidelines, it's a medium priority, and so if there's a difference of opinion, who makes the final decision? You see what I'm saying? There's no.
Page are you on, sir?
I'm on page two, under disagreements with tree warden assessment.
I think statute covers that, too, but the select ward, you appoint the tree warden, so I'm not part of his chain, per se. So if there's a disagreement with what his assessment is, then the next step in the chain, he could come to me, but ultimately.
I think you could write.
It does say in the statute that the select board has the final decision. But the way this is written here, I don't, I don't see anything where I could hire an arborist who would counter the tree warden's prioritization. It just says that if I don't agree, I can hire a certified arborist at their own expense to perform pruning, limbing, or removal. So that doesn't, like, give me the option to say, I don't agree with a high priority. My arborist says it's a medium priority, you know, what is, what does the select board say?
No, I get that, and I think, you know, th- this isn't, no two trees are alike. They're all different. This is kind of a smear, and I think that we could write a thousand pages to address this, and it would never be clear. But I think that the select board is reasonable enough. If the tree warden says, hey, that tree's got to come down, and you hire an arborist, and the arborist says, this one branch needs to come down and the rest of it's safe, I couldn't imagine a situation where we wouldn't come to an agreement on that. You know, nobody wants to cut a tree down because it's got one dead limb.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify the process because, like I said.
Certainly the tree warden, wouldn't say that tree's a problem if it didn't have something threatening the road. And if you had an arborist that was able to take care of one half of the tree and the rest of it was fine, I think that happens frequently.
Well, the, the way I read this, and just for clarity here, is you have a tree, you know, or John, John Smith has a tree on his property, and he's, and he thinks it's a hazard, and the town staff comes up and says, no, it isn't a hazard. And John Smith disagrees with that and thinks it is a hazard. It's his tree, so he can hire somebody to cut it down if he wants to. That's what this is saying. Am I correct?
I think it was the other way around.
But he's saying, what if the arborist comes and says, hey, the tree warden was wrong. This is not a high priority tree. This is a.
It's a medium priority.
But in order to disagree with the statement that it's not an immediate risk, that means that the tree warden or the town highway foreman or whoever is saying it is not a risk.
No, the tree warden gives me notification that that tree on your property is high priority.
That's not what this says, sir. This says, if you disagree with the tree warden's assessment, that the tree is not an immediate risk. If it is an immediate risk, that's a different story.
Right, if, if.
This, this specifically?
Not an immediate risk, the property owner may, I'd, I'd have to, I have no appeal right. My appeal is hiring an arborist to prune, limb, or remove the tree. I can't come to the board and say, I don't agree with the arborist's assessment.
If you think your tree is a risk, and our people come and say it isn't, you're welcome to come to this board. I don't see any reason why you can't do that.
Okay, alright.
But this very clearly says that the, the situation that they're, this is supposed to address is if the tree is not deemed a risk by town staff, and you feel that it is. It gives you the option of cutting it down yourself. That's what this says.
I read it the other way.
I think he's saying is if the town staff says it's a risk, and he, his recourse is to hire an arborist, and the arborist says, I looked at it. I don't deem it a high risk. What's his, what's his appeal process?
Yeah, but I think you, we're all read it wrong the first time, I think, too. I think everybody read the same thing wrong when Dick just pointed out. This say, say the tree warden comes and says, this tree isn't anything that we need to worry about. The tree's good. Everything's great, which is what this is saying. The tree is not an immediate risk. We don't need to do anything with it. And he thinks it's a risk. He thinks this thing's terrible. It's going to fall down. It's going to hurt somebody.
I'm reading it the total opposite. If the property owner disagrees that the tree warden's assessment that it's not a risk, then the owner may hire an arborist. And he's saying, what Mr. Crowley's saying is, the, the tree warden says, this tree, um.
It's classified as high priority, immediate risk to the public. That's.
No, I, you know, no, you're right. I, I take that back. I, I reread it, and Dick, Dick is right, that the tree is not an immediate.
Yeah, this, this disagreements with tree warden assessment has nothing to do with high risk.
I, I, I think this is very clear.
Yeah, no, I, I get it now. This is, if, if you disagree that the warden's assessment is not an immediate risk. I, it really should say, if the tree warden's assessment is a risk.
Correct. The word not should not be in there.
Yeah, the word not really shouldn't be in there.
Because you can do whatever you want on a tree on your own property. Cut it down. You can do whatever.
I think it should stay the way it's written. I don't, I don't, I will not accept in or agree with any change in this. I don't think, I think the intent behind this section is very clear. You agree with that, highway foreman?
You know, I'm just clarifying because I was confused by that, that wording, so.
Yeah, if you read it, it doesn't seem right until you think about it and read it half a dozen times. From the people that wrote this, was this determined?
As with this tree, we're currently on page two. So that's that big section right in the middle. It's got the huge paper clip in it. Right about there somewhere.
I'm just looking on clarification on that because to me it was, it was confusing. And then lastly, um, I don't see anything in here about, um, if the tree warden, let's say designates a tree on my property because it's a, a safety issue to the road, whether I own it or whether it's on the right of way, if I'm not complying, what are the fines, fees, or, there's nothing in here that says, you know, if, if you don't comply, you know, after a month, we're going to start charging you $50 a month until you comply, or. I don't see anything like that in there, so is there really any enforcement initiative for me to take care of my tree? This, but that's, I'm, I, I, not that I'm saying this should be or not, but what I'm saying is, is that you're making up this policy, and I get notification, a high priority, and I look at the policy and I go, what are they going to do if I don't cut it down? So I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm going to be belligerent like that, but I'm just reading it as.
Somebody may.
Where's the enforcement issue, you know, to take down a tree that's unsafe? That's, that's all I'm asking.
Mechanism.
If it's not in the town right of way and not on town property, then we really don't have any jurisdiction whatsoever.
Right, well, my, my question related to that, if it's a private, if it's on my property, but it's going to fall on Drake Road the next big windstorm, okay, because it's dead, alright? That would be, I, just from reading this, determine that to be high priority. That they offer the tree, the tree warden bump and say, next big windstorm, this is going to come down on Drake Road. So if I get the notification that I've got a high priority tree, whether I privately own it or whether the party is on the right of way, what's the enforcement mechanism to make me cut that down before the wind blows it down onto Drake Road? And your highway crew has to come up and, and clean it up because now it's a safety issue that the town has to take care of. Not that I'm being belligerent, but there's, there's no punch to your policy here if it's not followed. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, but once again, if it's not on town, and if it's not on town property or the town right of way by state statute, we have no jurisdiction whatsoever. Is that, do you agree with that, Mark?
That is correct. You bring up a good point because it could be a potential hazard to the public. But if it's on your property and it's not in the town right of way. So I guess all we could really do is say, hey, this tree is a real danger for the people that are walking by on Drake Road. You really should do something about it. Right, you're subjecting yourself to a liability.
If it's documented and it's on file, like we talked about using this form, and that tree falls on the road on a car or somebody, then, you know, then they're going to be a civil thing. You know, you, you, they're either they're, it damages their car or hurts someone.
So let's just, if part of the tree now is on the town's right of way, and I ignore, you know, the notice from the, the tree warden.
Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Yes, the, the, the assessment kind of goes for both parties. It's really made of protection, make everyone aware. So there's a tree, whether it's our responsibility, uh, property's responsibility, it gets documented. Then it's almost like a cold, um, inventory. You have a hazardous tree. So it's documented, it gets photographed, and it's, it's, uh, you know, reevaluated. So it just doesn't fly off into the ether. Uh, but it's, it's, it's something that, once it goes in, if people are aware.
Okay. There's an mechanism that we can enforce.
I give your input.
Yeah, I don't know how we would enforce that. I'll, I'll ask, I'll call the league and ask a question.
I don't think there's any teeth there whatsoever. If it's on private property, there's not much we can do about it. And I know that we've had trees that weren't on the right of way during big windstorms that fallen in the road. The town crew goes and picks it up.
Yeah, Vtrans has a, uh.
Vtrans will, too.
Vtrans, they, they say you, this, we're going to force this, or not enforce it, but this is what we want. If you don't do it, they just go take care of it. You know, because there's no, it's like you're, you're signed in the right of way. They tell you, you can't have it. It's in the right of way. Remove it, but they have no enforcement.
It costs me $2,500 to keep that sign in the right of way, so.
That, but they have no enforcement. The only, the time they enforce it is when they have a project in the area.
But there's, there's something more to that, Mike, though, because I've got a neighbor that's got big, huge trees out behind, right on the edge of my property, and my insurance company said, if you go to him and ask him to take those trees down, and he refuses to take them down, that tree lands on your house, you've done your due diligence of going and telling him. So the damage to your house will be on him, is what they told me. So I don't know if the, you can get the insurance companies involved in this ordeal.
For us to write a policy on all this stuff, it'd be so difficult to do that. Um, I mean, there, civil happenings are there for a reason. If, if your neighbor's tree falls on your house, you, you know you're going to call your insurance company, and they're going to fight it out, and, and, you know, you're going to fix the house until that gets resolved.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's hard to write all that stuff in a, what ifs in a policy.
I think this hazardous tree policy is, is a great start. It's way better than the no policy that we've had. And, uh, if next year, there's a bunch of problems that didn't address, we'll have to amend it. But I think this is a really good place to start.
What's the board's pleasure here?
I would make a motion that we adopt the hazardous tree policy as presented by the tree foreman, the tree warden, and the highway foreman.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's with the changes that, like the, putting in the report stuff.
Correct.
I'll add that stuff into it.
So we need a new.
Well, the BAT page is a signature page, so that you can, if you guys can sign that, it's a separate thing, so I can, I can work with that.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, Jeff. Nice effort. Thank you for the effort. Okay, Chief Mantello, you're up. Good evening, Chief.
Alright, a couple of things I got to go with the side of the report. So let's kind of go through what we did for calls of service for the month of September. I would point out a couple of things why they were up or why they were down. So we did 850 calls in September, down by 11 in August. You're going to see in the first, the animal problem complaint, we jumped to 725. Those are some of the enforcement pieces. We started on the whole licensing and, and the, uh, rabies vaccination issues. That's why that number went up. Community outreach, just a lot of things that we did, uh, in September, whether it was teachings, community things, or doing food. So we did always some school starts as we, you see the increase in these things. Nothing else stands out on that tree. Mental health went up by three. We did 43 mental health complaints in September. That has not changed. Any questions on the service calls?
Is the dog warden active now, helping you on those animal?
Yeah, I'm going to cover that in the end. Uh, I've got the update on that information. So just thanks for reminding me.
Hey, Chairman, can I address him? Chief, on the, on these mental health calls, um, I, I know the answer to this one, but not everybody does. I'm not looking for a number, like, number of hours, but how much is this consuming time of our officers, just on the mental health stuff?
Well, it depends if you have, on the average, so if you, let's say you get, well, I'll give you an example. So we had a major call two Fridays ago where, or Monday, I'm sorry. It was, uh, Col- uh, Columbus Day or Indigenous People Day, whatever you want to call it. And I wanted to leave, but I couldn't, so we had to work on our mental health. We had to work on our search warrant because if somebody doesn't want to leave their house, you have. you have to get a search warrant to get in their house. That was like eight hours. That was literally what I did all day.
When you got forty-three of them?
So you got another officer that has to come and do support, so you may add another two or three hours, depending on the situation. If you're not doing a mental health and you're just checking on somebody that may be not threatening themselves or threatening to other people or not self-harming, that could be a couple hours. Get ahold of mental health, maybe get ahold of crisis, see if they'll talk to them. If they don't, if they haven't made any other issues, you just kinda leave. So that could be a two-hour thing. Eight hours, minimum, a couple hours anyway.
I know it's, it's, takes up a lot of time and it's starting to get to a point where our officers are being subjected to violent action by people with mental illnesses that are left, and I'm not gonna speculate on why, but it's happening. And when pistols or sidearms are drawn and takers are drawn because of this, it's starting to ramp itself up. And so just wanted to make people aware of that. It's, it's a growing problem in our communities across the.
Yeah, it's not just, it's not just here.
It's not just here, but, but it's, we're not immune to it.
The mental health system's broken. They're doing the best they can do with what they have.
What do the communities that don't have a police department do with their mental health issues? State police?
And they call crisis, depending, you know, when they're, I mean, you know, the hospital, I mean, they have a wing there, as they did when they cut down the state hospital. They had funded money in these hospitals and they created extra beds, but that's only temporary. That's not for total residential for months and months and months.
And they're, they're at the, at the Rotten Regional Medical Center, they're putting them in hallways. That's how, you know, backed up it becomes. There, there, some of these patients are, have security guards watching them and they're in the hallways. So it's just becoming a greater, a bigger problem across our greater communities and not just Vermont.
Yeah, we don't wanna get on that rap a whole long time ago, who's funding all that.
Yeah.
Did you, did you sign the missing persons?
Uh, yes. Yes. Yes, so it could, it's a good one, that's right. I didn't kinda go over that. So we had, what did we say, two?
One, one last.
Oh, was it one last muscle, one I had, actually? Yeah, we found that person next morning. They were wrong. And that also was actually a, actually you could put that under both mental health and missing person. So we had a missing person. And that takes time. That's another time issue. But a lot of these things can take time.
But we don't really have any solutions, right? I mean, we have people that are living in the community that may, in some cases, should be institutionalized.
Correct.
But you don't have the authority to commit somebody.
Well, we do, actually. If they are self-harming or threatening somebody else, we can take custody of them and bring them in. But for them to do any evaluation, you have to get a mental health warrant signed by a judge for that to happen. We can secure them for us to work on a mental health warrant to happen, which is what happened recently.
But if there's no bed, that person's gonna be back sooner rather.
They'll minimally, even if they don't have a bed on the fourth floor, they'll, they'll keep them down in the east wing of the ER for, you know, six hours or so, depending. They got like seven beds down there, which is separate off the ER. If you ever been in the ER, you may not see it where you, where, where the visitors come in, but it's through the bays where the ambulances come in when you walk in there is where, before you get in the ER, it's right on your right. So you won't see that. That unit is wall off.
But are you seeing these same folks a month later?
Uh, we're seeing them every day. Yes.
No matter what you do.
We're gonna see them.
You're gonna see them again.
You know, we're waiting for community members to get out of the hospital now to come back and we'll deal with them when they get off their medications for two months. Yeah. I know, I sound cynical, but it's reality.
No, but I have a serious concern about officer safety in these, in these, in these situations.
In community safety.
Because they're, they're out, yeah, I mean, most of the time, we see them, they'll see them when a call comes in about it, but.
Because somebody else was threatened already, you know, and.
Well, I mean, you mentioned, you know, the one on Blissville is the one I spent a lot of time doing that day, recently.
Correct. There's a family with little girls and they're scared.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be again next month.
Well, the plus side is with their medication, the way they do it, because they can get court order medication, but they leave them there with a court order to take their medication, but there's nobody accountable to tell them to take their medication, if that makes sense. So what they've been trying to do is doing the monthly shots versus taking daily pills because it's long-acting and then you don't have to worry about every day that they're not taking it. That works better. That's why I'm able to work with one person in this community and I literally drive them there once a month to get their shot. Not under duress or anything, just I know that if I don't do that, you know, we're gonna be dealing, we're gonna be fighting and we're gonna be dealing with it. So that's something that, is it part of my job? No. But to keep people safe? Yeah.
Where do you have to take them, Pete?
A mental health outpatient right on Ingram.
Oh, in Rotten.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So we're doing the best that we can do.
Thank you for that effort, chief.
Yeah. Criminal arrests, so we are up, we did eleven less, fourteen, I'm sorry, up three. And we had a couple warrants. We had some aggravated domestic, we had that one, we had two disorderlies, burglary, hate-motivated crime, resisting arrest. Any questions on those? Okay, traffic, September, we were down, down like forty, but we've been hitting the areas that we're supposed to go. I've heard, heard nothing but great things, although we are gonna move the one on Main Street, I don't know if it's before winter, the one at the poles, we're supposed to put it on the east end, not the west end. The other ones, how the hell they working? You guys seen them all posted up, all the signs, solar signs? Maybe do obviously the other ones, try to get down to River Street and try to get out on Drake, Drake Road, have them out, so that's coming up on the other side. Any questions on that?
What's burning solid waste? On traffic violations?
Yeah.
Third one.
That's actually a ticket you give to somebody that's burning that shouldn't be burning. 'Cause a lot of these tickets, you can, you can write all sorts of things, doesn't have to be motor vehicle violations.
I went to a call one time, a couple of years ago, and one of your officers came and issued a citation for that because it was right down the road from your house and a big, I was calling a black smoke coming out of the backyard and I went down there, went with engine six and asked the young lady what the fire was and what she was burning and she said couches. And I said, you can't do that. She said, I can't.
I watched him.
Yeah, she was burning couches, literally.
Yeah, when I first came here, a lot of the students in springtime would burn all their springs and everything out there, so that doesn't happen anymore. So if you notice the calls of service at a university and off-campus houses, we, we expanded it. So we added a category in our system which would indicate that it's, it's in reference to off-campus housing. So that's why that ticker listed that longer, so we had eleven basically dealing with on-campus and off-campus.
There's a reason behind that, too, that, that letter to the president of the Vermont State University, to be able to provide accurate call volume, even though they're not on the campus, when there are calls from the PD and we're dealing with students, they need to know that. Just 'cause it's on campus doesn't mean it's out of sight, out of mind. So that's why they're adding that in there to track it.
Backup provided. You can see where that, what that is. Mostly buried in actual, they're all buried. And that, that, that is provided. All right, so busy month, like we talked about, the calls, mental health, we, we spent a lot of time on that. Interactions, one house. So this is something that Mike had asked me earlier today. So even though our, like, if you look under our service calls under persons suspicious circumstances, some of those are those people. Not all of them are the ones that are just parked somewhere. Some of them are just people called and there's a strange person that's walking down the road and it turns out to be a resident that, we know who it is.
When you deal with these homeless folks that have vehicles, I see them around, they're not registered, they're not inspected, are you having them towed?
Um, it depends on what they're, if it's not registered, yes. Now, the reason we don't for other things is because if we tow their car, what are we gonna do with them? Where are they gonna go? 'Cause that's always an issue. Gotta remember, when you move, remove somebody's wheels, okay, go sit over there. Now, under statute, the town manager's supposed to have a fund for people that need help. Did you know that? Did you know that, Mike?
No. Why'd you bring that up at a meeting right now?
Well, we won't get into that.
With a bus ticket called.
You already did, Pete. You already got into it.
So anyway, so it, it depends on the violations. Obviously, if they're intoxicated or if there's something else going on, that's different, you know. I mean, I have fixed cars to get them out of here. I helped a guy change a plug and I broke his plug. I'm like hopping a cruiser, I go to like, go to the, go to the, what do you call it? Parts store, get a plug for him, put it in for him. Okay, he was on his way, he was going around, but, you know, what am I gonna do? He didn't know what to do. Didn't know my own strength, I broke the plug, I had to replace it.
So what do you do? You send them to another town and that town sends them to another town, that town sends them back to you?
Sometimes that happens, but he was going straight. He was, he was actually going cross-country, so he had already made one trek, now he's heading back. He's going back to Oregon. But these local people, some of them are, they live around here, but that's not why they're there. They're not just doing it 'cause they're homeless, some of them are just out trying to do other things.
Right. That's why I was wondering if you had them towed.
Like, we try to get them moving on if they're not intoxicated.
Uncomfortable for them to be in this community.
Yeah.
Dewey Field has become, becoming a hangout where people are passing out in their cars or, so la, in the last, what, not even two weeks, there was two complaints I received of people down there passed out in cars. Well, I received one, Pete received one.
Dewey, Dewey Field, they have a daytime.
So they're in there, and this was in the, yeah, this was in the daytime. So that gate I wanted to put across there that I was balking against, I think it's probably gonna, we're gonna keep that thing locked.
Well, here's another one. That's why I was always for putting the gate at Crystal Beach, 'cause that's what they'll do. They, they seem open lots, dark, it's not like we're hanging down there all the time, especially in the winter and cold months, they'll go down there. I remember one spring, we found somebody taking a bath practically. Parked his car, had all his clothes out, he's in the, he's in the Crystal Beach with soap and everything. So, I mean, you know, is, do I think it's a, it's, it's out of control? No. So.
I think we're seeing more that people are living in their cars. It's not that they're, they're squatting a house somewhere or are living in the woods. There, there's unhoused people that are living in their car or staying in their cars.
Uh, we did have on a good side, though, on, I sent two officers to different schools because, you know, I'm leaving the end of May in twenty-twenty-seven, so I needed to get another death investigator, so I sent Avery to that school so I can get her up to speed. So when I leave, we'll have at least two investigators. And Officer Abbas, he's our, he's our new firearms instructor, that he just went through the forty-hour class recently. So I'm kinda gearing up that stuff. And then we, we do the fresh vegetables, the Castle and Care and the community center, they love it. Justin had handled that. Any questions on the reports? I want a couple of things I wanna go over. Mike mentioned the SRO grant. Do you wanna bring that up in this or not?
I'd ask that you do before the boards, 'cause it was, it was SRO and cops.
Yeah, so the cops grant, you know, we, it got accepted, right? We got it. Mike has forty-five days to send that in to accept that we're gonna utilize it, or at least possibly, but we have forty-five days to do that. So by November tenth, we're gonna come out, we're gonna come in here, Justin and I are gonna go over what, we've already kinda figured out what it's gonna cost, so we're gonna break it down, just kinda go through that stuff and then tell you more in detail about that grant. Is that fair? Yep. The SRO covered, so some of, so in two thousand and twenty-two, we dropped from eight to four hours a school. So we've been, for three years, we've been doing four hours, four hours, not four hours of school, four hours a day, and we cover three schools. We cover Castleton Elementary, Benson Village and Orwell Village. So four hours during the day, we cover those three schools.
Four hours shared between those three schools?
Yeah.
So you're at the school like for an hour each school?
Yeah, basically, 'cause you got travel time.
And this has been that way for three years?
Yeah.
'Cause it was brought up to me today that the school just recently decided to cut your guys' hours in half.
That was, that was a mistake on that person's part.
That was a mistake? Okay, okay. Well, it was a person that shouldn't know is who.
No, it's, I just sent her a new contract for next year. Now, it's gonna be four hours. She didn't say anything to me, the superintendent, so.
Okay. But it's been like this for three years?
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah, I talked to Justin today.
I had asked, chief.
Make sure it's clear on that.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I had asked chief to, to put together what it would cost to, in, in our school, if we wanted to put a full, a person up there during school hours, that, if that ever came up as a, a question, just so we're prepared for that question. Because the school, I seriously doubt that the, the school district's gonna add money back into their budget to get a full-time, or put more hours into those schools. And with the craziness that's going on, you know, people are concerned that, that having an officer in a school for an hour is not adequate.
Well, the high school has an officer for a full day.
Yeah.
And then, both of them are covered by Farah. I don't know what Dale, it's probably like us, maybe a couple, four hours a day over a, a grade.
Well, the high school has a dedicated person all day.
Yeah, and they should. Absolutely. Yeah.
A three-year-old's not driving the school with, you know, his truck with his, but, yeah. Pete, can you touch on what three, three schools we take care of?
Can I what?
Can you touch on what three schools we take care of?
CES.
Okay.
Benson and Orwell.
Okay. And that's a contract through Slate Valley School District. And Farah even takes care of the other two schools?
Right.
Okay. Just so everybody's clear on that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I just did all their Ellis training for them for all their staff, so that's something that we try to, we try to keep up and that's something I've done with the businesses, I've done with churches, a lot of different schools, did a Hubbard and Forge. So maybe that's something you probably should inquire about, too. You got, you got a lot of people there.
Active shooter.
Yeah. All right, so I wanna update on the dogs. Now, this has been a tenuous deal for sure. So originally, we started with ninety-five dogs that were unlicensed or unvaccinated. This has been a huge thing, we all will need to go over this whole thing, the history of it, but so I was tasked to help out the animal patrol officer, so we sent the fourteen-day letter out, we got some responses, then I send actual a copy of the ticket. So we dropped it to twenty-seven as of last Friday. Went to, I met with the ACO, the animal patrol officer, Mike, last Friday, actually. I gave him the remaining list of the twenty-seven that were on there with some tickets that were not, or mail that was returned for whatever reason. I said, just follow up and go to these addresses, make contact with these people and see if they're there. And then I haven't heard back from them, so I think that's pretty good. That's pretty good. I really wanted to hopefully get like eighty percent of them anyway. So the next stage, really, I have not sent any tickets out. I did. So, the next stage, really, I have not sent any tickets out. Uh, I didn't really plan to. I was really playing poker. And, and they've responded. No, I'm being serious, you know? And I, I don't wanna, you know, I mean, now, there's also a number of residents have dogs, but darn't even on the list. So, these are the people that originally were on the list and maintained it, or didn't maintain it. And there's people that have pets that aren't even, aren't even on.
How do you, yeah, how do you handle that?
Well, I don't, I only go to the ones I know, because I've been to the places before. But I know there's a bunch of students, college students, that they got more dogs now out. You see them walking the street, in Main Street? I know they're not registered.
Do they, do they know that they're supposed to register them, Pete?
Oh, no.
That would be my question.
But that's something that we're gonna follow, well, we'll follow up on that stuff. That's the last group that we're gonna hit.
Okay.
Usually, we find out because someone reports it. Usually, we find out because someone reports it.
Yeah.
That's pretty good to go from 95 to 27.
Well, I think, I even think out of those 27, I really think we'll get down to, like, five. Because I know there's people on this list that are gonna, they're gonna, uh, contents.
If the dog is registered elsewhere...
Then they should register here. If they live here, it's gotta be registered here. Wherever you live, you gotta register in the township, or municipal, you do. That's a, that's a state. That's part of, that's a part of the state statute. We did have people that had it registered elsewhere, and they moved here, but didn't change over. Like, they moved from, say, Orwell, when they moved to Castleton, and they didn't register it here, so they just had...
Maybe vaccinated, but it's not registered.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Not something, it's not something I would think to do. It's not. Your car, yes, but your dog? I would not think of doing that.
It's actually state law.
Not everybody knows the state law, Pete, you know?
Listen, I...
We just gotta, what I'm saying, we gotta educate people. I, I'm sure nine out of 10 people that go to college up here don't have any idea that they've gotta register their dog here also. That's all I'm saying. I'm sure that's what it is.
I'm trying to remember back when they moved to town. That was a few years ago. But I'm pretty sure we called the town office, and they told us we had to re-register within 30 days. Thirty days after we moved in.
Well, you gotta remember, yeah, Ned...
But that was 1985, too.
The town clerk sends out these letters, but she was getting no response. This is why it came to this point. We had almost 100, 100 of these unregistered dogs, because nobody cared about what she had to say. And I, I, that's disrespectful. That's wrong. But, that's where it came down to. So... Any other questions?
Chief, do, Halloween is on Friday night. Do you have enough staff to cover the streets?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, Castleton's pretty good. I mean, our concern would be the, some of y'all came as far as, I know there's gonna be one over here down the end of the mechanic, because they've already talked to me about it.
That's good. That's good.
No, no. One of the things they know is that I've been doing it for a while, is, is if you, you wanna meet with me, we'll go over what I think you need to do. These are the things you gotta stay in these parameters. So, most of them are pretty good about it. So, and then, um, yeah, we'll have enough, because I'm gonna be out, uh, all the two officers on, let's hope it's three of us.
Especially with the kids, you know, out.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think Friday is supposed to rain.
That'll help you.
I heard that.
That'll help you.
That'll pull off a bomb, right? I'm gonna be tied in top, but I was real quick. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Pete.
You wanna talk about Dewey Field, Mark?
Sure. Um, so, for a few years, we've talked about what we could do with that leftover piece of Dewey Field. It would be east of the Little League field, former tennis courts. And I'm not really sure, I've talked with Mike a little bit about where the boundary lines are. It's a little uncertain. But, one of the things that has come up in recent years would be to build a bicycle pump track. And a pump track is, uh, kinda like a little motocross track. It's called a pump track because when you learn to ride it correctly, it's designed with ups and downs, kinda like a skateboard park. So, if you have the necessary skills, you can make it all the way around that track without ever pedaling, just by pushing on the handlebar, shifting your weight. So, it's a good way for youngsters to learn the skills they would need before they went to an actual mountain bike park and rode steep trails uphill and down. There's bermed corners and little jumps, that type of thing. And, and adults use them as well, as a way to just continue to build your skills. If you Google it, you'll see hundreds of examples. I think Andy Vermilier, uh, sent in some literature that has a couple of pictures.
Mm-hmm.
They just built one, I don't think they call it the Success School anymore, but the school on Allen Street, across from the hospital.
Yeah.
They built one there. They've been pretty popular. Um, the bike shop in Poltonie, Porcupine Bikes, there's, uh, two partners. One, Brandon Rowe, lives here in town. His wife, Erin, is a manager up at the lodge. Uh, his partner at the bike shop, Hardy Avery, has designed mountain bike trails for a living for 20 years. Um, he designed all the trails down at Slate Valley and Poltonie, at the Stowe Mountain Bike Park, and he has volunteered to work on the design of this, because it, you know, has to be done correctly. The, the ups and downs have to be spaced correctly to actually make it a pump track. Um, so there's a lot of people that, a lot of qualified people, like Andy Vermilier, the bike shop, uh, that are really interested in this. Uh, Kyle Cornell, representative from Casellas, he has children in that age group and is really interested in seeing one down there, and has told us that, uh, Casellas would commit to $10,000 in in-kind work to, uh, build this track. I believe that we have a substantial amount of pretty high-quality gravel where the tennis courts used to be. The, those tennis courts were built with federal money in the early 1970s, so I'm sure that there were, uh, specific guidelines as to what material had to be there. So, I think there's a substantial amount there. Um...
What would be the liability to the town if someone gets hurt?
Well, I think it's probably the same as if they get hurt in baseball, or at the beach, or anywhere else. Um, I think that if the town, you know, for, personally, the, the threshold is, were you acting as a reasonably pertinent person? You know, if, if a child gets hurt on your property. Um, you know, if they fall down in your driveway and get hurt, you weren't negligent. If, if you dig a big hole in the middle of your driveway that's 20 feet deep and don't block it off, then that's not reasonable, and you're liable. So, I don't think that the town would be exposed to any excess liability. Again, the school in Rutland just put one of these in. It's not like you're going off a 20-foot jump. Did you see the pictures of it?
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, I mean, it's just roll, bicycling up and down. Um, you know, from my standpoint, anything that would take a child away from a cellphone and put them outdoors on a bicycle, uh, it's the greatest thing that could possibly happen. Uh, I think that this has been pretty successful. I don't wanna get really off the rails here, but in 2014, Iceland determined that they had the highest rate of juvenile alcoholism in the world. And they embarked on a national program to get kids outdoors, involved in other activities. And now, 12 years later, they have one of the lowest rates of juvenile alcoholism in the world.
Do you need special work for this?
No, no. You can do it on, you know, adults do it on mountain bikes. You could do it on your beach cruiser, on a BMX bike, um, on anything. Again, this is not highly technical. It, it's a really entry-level course. People have them in their backyards that are no bigger than this room. I'd like to see one a little bit bigger than that. Um, and, and they're fun for people of all levels. And, and I think with, uh, the generous donation from Casellas and, and from the bike shop in Poltonie with their design, Andy Vermilier, um, Andy's talked to, uh, Drew Bentley here in town. Do you know Drew?
No.
Uh, he lives in the house that used to be Mrs. Maholins', and he does, uh, small-scale excavation, designs mountain bike trails, uh, landscaping, super sharp guy. Pretty sure he had his PhD in something and gave up teaching to do this. So, there's a, a really responsible group of people that would work hard on making this happen in a responsible way. And we don't know for sure that there's enough room to do this the way we'd like to, because that end of the property is, we're not sure of the boundaries. Maybe Mike is, but...
I have the drawing, but there's no pins through that area, so it's gonna be, use an aerial shot to kinda get a guesstimation.
There's people involved that are smart enough to figure that out from the maps before anything happens. At this point, they're saying, hey, do we have the blessing of the town to use that piece of property, to use whatever material is underneath the old tennis courts, and, uh, see if we can make this happen?
Are they looking for funding from the town, or do they think it's gonna be covered with the in-kind work?
I think the only thing we might possibly be looking from the, for from the town would be a little bit of gravel. Um, again, I think there's, there's quite a bit. Have you ever looked at those tennis courts? What do you think, Heath? How much stone is, that, don't you think that's pretty high-quality material?
I looked at when we peeled the old tower off, and it's...
And it's...
We never dug down into it.
Four feet thick?
Yeah, three to four, yup, that whole area.
It would be great if, at some point in time, if your rubber-tired loader backhoe was going by there, if you could poke a hole in it and say, yeah, this is good material, or it's not, but...
Just FYI going into that, so they know it's there. One of these storm drain outlets is right there, so you know that going into it. The one that drains from underneath the old town office down through dumps right there at them old tennis courts.
Yup.
Just so you know.
And it, it does flood, like, in 2019, when we had that, all that water, it, it got high right there, so...
I guess, oh, you've got to draw and know, this is your two-way. I think it, it doesn't get used, if it can get used.
Until, like, four years ago, it wasn't hardly anything growing on it. All these years that that's been down there, the, now, now it's got some pine trees been growing up through it and stuff like that, but, but that, whatever quality of the stuff that was there, it wasn't, things didn't take hold. And, but in, like, four years ago, it really started getting, really grown over.
Yeah, I'm assuming when, when that project was done with federal money, there had to been pretty strict guidelines as to what was used. But, I think this project has a lot of really, uh, key pieces in place. It has, uh, you know, a professional trail designer who's, who's willing to, uh, put his time into it. Um...
Yeah, I think it would probably bring people into the town with their kids as well.
So, you could probably have a plan put together by spring when it's time to start digging, right?
There's absolutely no doubt that we have the right people here to put together a plan that could come back and say, hey, this is how much land the town owns. This is what we can do in that area. And, uh, you know, we have a pretty substantial in-kind, and, uh, a little bit of material from the town. Um, every couple of years, it might need a little touch-up with a skid steer, but, again, this isn't 10 miles of road. It's gonna be...
There's a...
Hundred to 200 yards of four-foot wide trail.
You said they just put one in in Orwell?
Yeah, the school that's across from the hospital on Allen Street. It used to be called the Success School. But, if you Google it, pump track in Rutland, that'll come right up, because that's pretty new. And you'll see pictures of...
You mean they'll see it?
Yeah, yeah. You can see it right from Allen Street, or right in the school, and, um, take a look at it. You'll see a dozen kids out there all the time. It's what we're looking to do, you know, to get our kids outdoors and do some healthy activities. And it dovetails nicely. I remember when, you know, I had one child playing Little League, and the other one wasn't. You know, you're at Dewey Field, and you're looking for more than, you're looking for something for your other kids to do that aren't involved playing baseball. Hopefully, we're gonna have that playground in the future. Um, and to have...
Would they include, pardon, would they include, uh, helping us with prep work for that, uh, playground as part of their in-kind?
Yup. Yeah, I mean, you, you know that company. They have the engineers, the planners, the equipment, the operators, and, um, and a couple of dedicated people that live here in town that have children in that age group, and they would, they're motivated to see this happen.
I mean, if we've got a project for wasted land right now that's just looking dilapidated, then I would, I would be all for it, because at least something would be there that would be usable at very little cost to the town, so...
Why don't you come back in the spring when you're ready with a plan, and I, I know at least 20% of the board will be behind it. I got a feeling more than that will be.
Good. Yeah, I just, I know that these folks all wanna know there's gonna be a positive outlook at the end of this, before they put a lot of time into it. Because, I mean, you, you know Andy Vee and the type of work he does. This, this is what it's gonna be like. It'll be very professional.
I don't think there's any point in, uh, you know, motion right now, but I think the, is, I can't speak for anyone but myself, but I, I think this board is behind us.
You're doing a good job speaking, Nick. Keep going.
No.
Yeah, you are.
Go, go for it. Go make it happen, and I can't believe this board will change their mind in the spring.
Yeah.
It's not that I'm against it. I just never heard of it before.
Yeah, um, Martha called me the same thing. She goes, what is a bump track? I go, no, it's pump track. But, Google it, and you'll see it's, it's really, uh, it's very, very popular everywhere. One of the problems with mountain biking as a sport, you know, we have, in Poltonie is one of the nicest mountain bike parks in the country. I don't know if you're aware of that. Um, Poltonie was lucky enough to have the co-founder of Wayfair live there, and he built some mountain bike trails, and, uh, and they developed a nonprofit called Slate Valley Trails. They now have, I think, 1,200 acres of land and 60 miles of trails. And people come from all over the country to ride there. You know, they have three parking lots, and on a nice Saturday, there's 50 cars. People come from everywhere. But there's a high barrier to entry. You know, if, if you're a fifth-grade kid that has ridden your bike on Main Street, you're not ready to ride on those trails. And this is the, the gateway to it. We get this done, I'm gonna go down and ride it with you.
On a BMX bike and a double-sided bicycle.
I have enough to do it, too.
Yeah?
Yeah. Great, Matthew. Yeah, I see on Facebook, a lot of young families will spend a day over there.
Yeah.
Here, if that's there, and the playground's set there, there's multiple things to do down it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, you've got baseball fields, soccer fields, the playground, a pump track, a nice picnic area. It's a really nice thing for, for families.
Has great black walnut trees over there.
Yeah.
I've been picking all the walnuts.
Happy squirrels. Okay, let's move on then, Mark. You ready to, go ahead and go forward on that, please. Okay, fifth and sixth-grade sports. Um, my understanding is that the school system is wanting to drop fifth and sixth-grade sports, and they're expecting the town to pick it up. Is that a pretty accurate assessment?
Correct, yeah. Micah Barshay, new recreation director, um, that is correct. It looks like the Slate Valley School District is looking to drop grades five and six. Um, they are looking to cut their budget and put more focus into their football program, um, for grades five and six as a feeder into the high school.
So, do you have a recommendation or thoughts, or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think I kind of see it both ways. Um, most of my experience has been in Connecticut and Massachusetts, so grades five and six usually is covered by recreation. So, um, it's very different for me to think that middle-school sports are done by the schools. Um, but I think it's kind of, the way we're kind of looking at it is that the schools aren't really giving us much of a choice on the matter, so why not start working on things a little bit, um, earlier and getting things into our budget? Um, because again, it's not gonna be for this school year, it's gonna be for next school year. Um, so, to start working on things for then. Um, we're also trying to work with the schools to see if they can give us anything in return, whether it be equipment, um, uniforms, and that way it's not just all of us, right, um, put on us, right away.
When we met with the school, uh, we met with the superintendent and Eric Ramey, the, um, the athletic director, and they basically said that if they have to cut something out of their budget, that's gonna be the first thing they cut. And they wanna build a feeder program for football into the high school, so... And they wanna build a feeder program for football into the high school, I said, I think it was seventh and eighth grade, um, that they don't have now. But Fairhaven was there, they, they were represented, uh, they were, they're doing the same thing that Castle's doing right now, they were talking about it, and uh, it sounds like if we don't, and it's only one sport, it's only one season, we're already doing two, right?
Uh, it would be for soccer and for basketball.
Okay.
And with conversations with Fairhaven, right now, they're looking at trying to start with basketball and then feed in soccer for the, for that next year. So, doing the fifty-fifty kind of switches gets in started.
If, if they don't do it, if they take it out of their budget, and our, then, then what? It's a so-what thing. Um, we're not gonna force them to do it, and they're not, they can't force us to do it. So, what happens to youth sports in our town? For the cost, for the simple cost of this, which is not gonna cost a lot. I, I mean, Jim Lee and I have talked about this, and he was gonna give you, I'll try to get ahold of the select board members and give you his opinion on it, but, um, it's really not gonna cost a whole bunch, 'cause what, at that, at that grade level, it's equipment, that's where we end up, um, having the shortfalls, but, like, for baseball, having baseballs and having the bases and, you know, that stuff that, um, we do, um, for soccer and providing nets, and it's, it's not gonna cost a whole bunch. And if the school can give up some of their stuff, 'cause that's what I brought up to, to Eric, I said, "Well, if you're not gonna do this, then you must have equipment that you're not gonna use, and at least the towns would get some reprieve." So, I don't know, that's, that's my opinion, is, um, if they're gonna drop, and nothing says they're gonna drop it, but that was what they said, if they are forced to cut their budget, which school budgets have been kind of contentious the last couple of go-arounds, that they could drop it out of there anyway.
That's not gonna fund the seventh and eighth-grade football program.
It's seventy, seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars, I think what they said, um, is what their, their budget is for it.
For the fifth and sixth-grade sports?
Yes.
Seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars?
And he said most of it's buses.
And how are we gonna do that for nothing?
'Cause it's buses. And what, and how it was sold to us, just, and, and I, I don't know how I'm gonna, and I'll, I'll give you a second, and let me get my thought out. Um, the, uh, one of the things that, they said eighty, eighty percent of their costs were buses. So, it's, it's, 'cause they're busing people from Orwell and Benson, and they're riding this bus, these long trips, and they said if the town runs it, it gives us greater flexibility in scheduling. Um, and that parents will be in, there'll be no buses. There'll be no cost for buses, like, the parents would have to pick up and drop off their kids.
I would prefer just to see the higher, the school district do it like that versus pass it on to the town. I think that to add one program, they shouldn't cut another program, a programs that they've been doing for years.
Well, that's what they're doing, Rob.
Yeah, I know, and I don't think that's true. If they wanna have a seventh and eighth-grade football team, then they should find out how to find the money without doing away a program that they've had forever and hurting other kids.
And that, that's what we, we heard, was, and the, the money, so it's not gonna come out of the budget and not be placed somewhere else. It's not like they're gonna reduce their budget by eighty thousand dollars. By taking out the fifth and sixth-grade sports, it's not like, "Oh, look, and we're saving eighty thousand dollars."
No, 'cause they're putting it towards the seventh and eighth-grade football program.
And that's, that was a statement made in the meeting, I wouldn't, I would just say, my statement would be, they're not gonna take it out of the budget and leave, it's not gonna just come out of the budget, stay out of the budget. It's gonna probably be repurposed.
They should take it out of the budget and put it back into academics, 'cause the kids aren't doing very well. I mean, that's the sad part.
So, at this point, this is all conjecture.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're asking the towns to come back to them, to bring it before the select boards, um, and, and Joe Gunter was at the meeting, and so was their new rec director, Erica, I think his name, Erica, Erica Knott. Um, and this, so they asked to go back and say, "What do the towns think about it?" And we owe them a response back in early November about what, what our thoughts are about it. If you say no, then the answer to them is no, but they, they wanna, they wanna know what the towns feel about it. If you say no...
Mike, do you know where I'm coming from? If, if the fifth and sixth-grade sports, basketball and soccer, cost the school district seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars, do you have any idea what the football program costs, the university, the high school? They're not gonna cover the seventh and eighth-grade football with seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. It's gonna be two or three times that. So, what, what are they cutting next? What, next year, they're gonna say, "Oh, we're gonna cut all sports for, for first, second, third, and fourth grade." That, that's what's coming.
Well, then they, they made a statement a couple of years ago that they were gonna cut the late bus out. So, that, those kids that, um, you know, wouldn't have the bus to go home after sports. I, I think I remember that being as one of their statements, that if they had to cut something, a late bus would be out of there, so... If it's not some, if it's not one thing, it's gonna be the other.
To me, it doesn't even seem like it should be legal under Title IX, that you're gonna take sports away from fifth and sixth-grade co-ed teams, so you're, you're gonna eliminate sports for these young girls, so you can add sports for the boys' football program.
If that's really what, that was a statement made during a meeting, um, that's not been, like, a public release, so...
Read that statement.
What's that?
Who made the statement?
No, the rec athletic director.
That's...
I mean, the athletic director's not with the school board, so what I'm saying is, you know, how they really determine it at the end could be something different. But I have a hard time believing that they're gonna take X amount of dollars out of their budget, and it's, and it's not gonna get put somewhere else.
Just a minute, Heath. This, this particular select board member is not in favor of seeing the school cut the fifth and sixth-grade sports programs. If they wanna add a seventh and eighth-grade football program for the boys, they're welcome to do so, but not at the expense of the other children. That's my opinion.
That's pretty much what I just said, too, yes.
I mean, I think that the taxpayers of the town pay enough money for their school taxes right now, and then to add an other burden on top of that for something that's been covered for the school taxes for all these years is another issue altogether, 'cause I don't think we're gonna do it for free.
No, it won't be free.
'Cause you have to buy, every year, you're gonna have to buy, you know, so if you don't have kids, you're already paying a fortune. If you don't have kids in the school district, you're already paying a fortune for it, and now you wanna pay it through the town side, too. For, you know, I'm not against kids' sports, but I don't think there's some people that might not wanna pay for their neighbor's kid to play basketball.
If they cut it, I'd be in favor of us doing it, but if they cut it, the budget, the school budget should go down.
Seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars.
Whatever it costs them, it should go down, 'cause now you're asking the parents to pay twice for that.
Mary Lee, your opinion?
I agree, you can't take away from one grade and give to another grade.
So, there's your consensus, Mike.
And I think one of the things, uh, Micah, that, um, they had discussed was, um, oh, the, the number, we're already doing some things, so we're already taking, what, what do we?
Baseball and softball.
Yeah, okay, so, we're paying for, we're, we are paying for baseball and softball, they don't do that one, so... Um, just so you're aware of what, what we do and don't, what we do and do not do right now.
Well, when you come down to it, if you take something away from fifth and sixth grade, when they get seventh and eighth grade, they haven't learned what they would've learned in fifth and sixth grade. You know, is, is the learning process starting from Little League or whatever, right on up?
I think our local program is the Vipers, that's where, if kids are aspiring to play football, that's where they get their start. Little, the, the little, not, not the seventh and eighth graders.
Heath, you have anything to add?
Yeah, and that's where the change is with the seventh and eighth-grade football. VPA for ten years now did not allow tackle football in seventh and eighth grade. And they have changed that ruling in the last year to allow tacker football back in seventh and eighth grade. The private club that has been doing the seventh and eighth-grade tackle football, I've heard rumors that the seventh and eighth-grade part is going away from that club because of the school programs being able to have it, and that's probably where the seventh and eighth-grade football coming, where you're seeing it come back in. Just 'cause I've got a, it's now into the high school, been through that rotation. And, but I heard the private club is trying to do away with their seventh and eighth-grade football program because of the cost, just like you're talking about, it is to maintain the helmets and the equipment on a football, you're correct, Bob, it's crazy.
Yeah, I know. So, it is a consensus of this board that we do not, we really are not happy about the school district potentially eliminating fifth and sixth-grade sports in general. And particularly if it's at the expense of creating a football program for the seventh and eighth-grade boys. Do we all agree on that?
I'd say so.
All right, then can we move on?
I know, Micah, do you have anything else?
I do not. Um, the only thing that we have the gym space available here, I guess we'll have to shift some stuff around, potentially, to make it work. Um, but we are very lucky enough that we have this facility available to use, and that we're not looking for other places to rent out that would be a cost on top of all the other costs of running a sports program.
I'm certainly not saying this board wouldn't support you with and when that has to come to pass, but we, at this point in time, are not encouraging the school district to take that course of action.
We're gonna be asking the same parents to volunteer for one more sport to coach.
Yeah, that's what we probably, we have to get coaches, refs, that'd be all on us, um, you know, and, and one of the things I mentioned to, um, to the superintendent was, we have not been allowed to use the elementary school. When, when the Castle lost, they gave up the school, the Castle Hubbard School District went to, to the union, um, we couldn't use that school, that was a big, that was a big, um, bone of contention for our rec commission, is that we couldn't use that place, and I'm like, if they, if they give up sports and say we ever did take it up, they'd have to give us access to that gym, so there were spaces to practice and do stuff at no cost, no cleaning charges. You know, if they're giving up eighty thousand dollars, um, and then wanna charge us to use the gym, that, that wouldn't set it well with most people.
I would bet that you would see enrollment and all of those drop down if the town took it over and it wasn't through a school. I bet you you would see the teams dwindling along.
We all know transportation would be an issue for at least some parents.
Well, what you just said, the cost of the school buses, so the taxpayers are paying that now, so if the school does away with that and they expect the parents, you either pay the school for the school buses, or the parents gotta, it costs the parents to move their, it's, you're just shuffling the things you're paying here, or you're paying here. It's not like the cost goes away.
They're not paying the parents, it's, you know, the burden.
No, 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 but the parents, it costs the parents to get out of work, to truck their kids around and gas, and all the time, you know. It's not like the seventy-five thousand dollars goes away because we're not using school buses.
All right, we're gonna move on.
Thanks, Mark.
You have your, you have your, uh, answer, Mike.
I think more than, more than he probably needed to hear.
No, it, it's...
So, we're gonna, what's next? Um, we have in our, we have in our packet some stuff about Crystal Beach that's not on the agenda. Do we wanna talk about that?
Um, if you would in mind, um, I'll, the history on this one, are we good to go then?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so Martha, um, spoke to me Friday. Um, if you look at the very first page, that's the opening to the restrooms at the beach. And what I'd ask her to do is come up with a, a proposal about putting a gate or something across that. But you see the cost, so, and it really didn't, what they, what they offered wasn't what Martha was looking for. Um, she's gonna, what Martha's gonna do is she's gonna have, um, the staff up there, Ken and somebody else, I forgot.
They was boarded up today.
Yeah, that's what they were doing, so this, that one's off the table. Um, so the people can't get into the doors to get into the bathrooms or into the office space, um, so that's gone by. Um, the, the other one was the gate, the second one was a gate across the front, that's off the table. So, we're really talking about the third one, um, from Middlebury Fence, um, to repair the fence. I think, Bob, you made a comment about the fence a long while ago, about grass growing up through it. So, that, what happened over there, it kind of got left, um, like, it's wild land over there. Um, but there's some fence that is broken down and fixed, there was a quote here to, for two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Um, she reached out to other fence companies and no one's got back to her. Um, and which isn't unheard of, usually, if you look at our bids in the past, we'd get maybe two. Um, uh, but this is the, the proposal is, uh, for the removal and replacement of approximately thirty linear feet of sixty-inch, nine-gauge Bakigiri, um, chain-link fence, fabric fencing, to include removal and disposal of the existing chain-link fence, straighten and plumb the post, install new top rails, uh, new five-foot-high galvanized chain-link fabric, and tie new fabric to existing posts. Um, so, this is what, the, out of the three, it's the only one that survived first contact. So, I'm looking for the board to approve, it's in their budget to do this, we have fence repair in there, um, to approve that one from Middlebury Fence Company with only one bid.
Well, it needs to get done, correct? It's pretty poor condition.
It makes the place look like crap, it really...
This is the one section we didn't redo last time, right?
Right. This is the last remain, this is the remaining section that needs to be...
We redid a lot of this here with the past few years.
Well, the beach looks great, except for this, it's cash-positive, I think that we should do it. Okay, I would make a motion that we accept the bid from Middlebury Fence for two-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents to do, uh, the repairs of the chain-link fence at Crystal Beach.
Second it. Any more discussion?
Can you do this when it's not warned? The fence is on, on the agenda. Can we do it?
You can, can you make the motion to add, add something to the agenda?
Isn't it, if it's under five thousand dollars, we can do it, can't we?
You're the parliamentarian, you tell us.
Well, it's not on the agenda as an, as an item, but I really, I'd say we can, because I really doubt anyone in town is gonna come and throw us, take us to court over this.
We've done it in the past, there's been other times that things got added to an agenda.
And it's a maintenance issue under five thousand, I think we can do that.
I'm for it, but I'm just asking.
I, I, I don't see any significant downside.
Mike, what's your authorization to spend?
Two thousand. Four thousand sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents less than that?
Oh, okay.
Also, it wouldn't have been four yet, it'd been done already.
I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wouldn't lose any sleep over it, Mary Lee.
Just a question.
No, I, I...
Good point.
I think it's a good point, but it's a maintenance item, it could've been done under purchase orders, and had there been a purchase order presented, we could've done it there.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
All right, let's talk briefly about the, the Facility Rental Information Guide. Application, whatever you wanna, this document. I'm ready to approve it as presented, I don't know about the rest of the board. This, you made the changes we suggested last meeting?
Probably more than you suggested at this point, just, um, I did talk to Merrill Bent, um, and it's not perfect by any means, but it, it gets us to the point where our liability is reduced by having this.
And everybody will be on the same...
Everyone knows what the prices are, will get posted, so if someone's looking, so, what's that?
I just have a couple of points to add. I was out of town for the beach last weekend.
When Mike's done, you can talk, Mary. When you're done, Mike, let me know.
So, the, um, there was, let me see where we're at here. The only thing that, that I was still uncertain of was, the board had made mention that for every hour you rent, you get an hour free. I deviated from this on there, 'cause we have some rentals that are four hours long, and they're gonna take up the place for eight hours, it's like, I, I'm not sure if that was the spirit of what you wanted to do, 'cause you wanted to get people in there, and so it says that you get an hour, additional hour at no cost.
I think that was the intention.
So, that they could have time to clean it up.
Yeah. I mean, I know that my belief, and I believe Micah would be the same, is that if the building's not being used and someone shows up twenty minutes earlier than what they said, and there's no one using it, they can set up, I mean, we're not tyrants.
Right.
We want...
The building to be used by the community.
I think that we should empower our rec director to have a lot of discretion and stuff like this. You know, use your head and use your best judgment and do what makes sense.
And there, there's a secondary, when we get to it, there's a, the, um, the second document's the gym use and access guidelines. Just, again, it's, it's about keys, controls, and making sure we're, um, prioritizing, uh, who can use it. And that's where I thought maybe the select board would weigh in on that, if you didn't like the priorities that were put in there, how it was, how they were listed. Um, I don't think, I, if I could show this to ten people, not all ten people... I don't think, if I could show this to ten people, not all ten people are gonna agree with the priority. So it's, it's up, at your pleasure, at your discretion, whatever you want.
Mary, you have thoughts?
Mary McIntyre, very active in the rec community. Looking at the Municipal Facility Rental Information Guide and application, I had questioned, one hour shall get an additional hour at no cost. So I questioned, so if you got, if you rented for four hours, does that mean you get eight? Or does that mean everybody who rents gets a half hour before and a half hour after, whatever they need?
That's what I was saying, because originally, I listened to the tape of the recording and it said that for every hour you rent, you get an additional hour. And I'm like, that could, when we start renting, getting into this, that it could say, nobody else can rent that day because somebody's got it now. Instead of renting for four hours, they get it for eight hours. So it, the way I wrote it in there was, you shall get an additional hour at no cost. So how they use that hour, it means, it means something to the, to the rec coordinator because if multiple people are trying to use a space, he has to know is, are you coming in a half hour early and staying a half hour late, or are you coming in an hour early? You know, and you're gonna use your hour and you'll pick up before you leave. It's just a scheduling point for, for MICA. But that was the intent, was you, you get an hour free out of that rental.
And a perk for people that are starting a program. And, and hopefully, at some point, this building's gonna be so busy that we won't be able to do that. It'll be scheduled back to back. But for right now, just a perk to get people started.
And a half hour, but doubling somebody's time for half the price, that, that seemed a little overkill.
It's not an intent.
What? It's gotta be so that MICA can defend it because I can see two people coming in saying, no, 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 that isn't what this is. So I think it's gotta be black and white. Otherwise, he's gonna end up in a terrible position. Also.
Should we say more, more?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be easy enough to solve.
Under three, residency determination. A Castleton resident is defined as an individual who resides within the geographic boundaries of the town of Castleton, Vermont, and can provide proof of residency, i.e. driver's license, utility bill, tax bill. HAGO is if you pay taxes in town. Under HAGO, when you're signing up for programs.
Well, if you're a renter, you don't pay any tax, but you're still a resident.
So, but according to this, then if you own a camp up on Hart Tower Road, then you're not a resident.
But you have a tax bill.
I'm just looking for consistency.
It would be somebody that lives in the town.
It's giving three examples. You could use a driver's license or a tax bill, or a utility bill that showed that you're a resident.
But by using the word "you reside" within the geographic, you're not necessarily residing if you just pay taxes in this town.
Well, if somebody pushes that, we'll lose ten bucks.
This would be, if you're gonna make a document, I think it needs to be accurate. I don't, we've, we've made so many hesitations in creating this recreation building and program and lost so much footing. I think when you are finally putting stuff into black and white, you've gotta get it.
Could you say resides or pays taxes to the town of Castleton?
Because it's just contradictory. You've got two forms out there, and HAGO is saying one thing, and this is saying another, so I just think they should be.
There's people that have lived in the town their whole lives and never owned a piece of property. They rent, they don't pay tax. But they're still a resident.
So they reside. But if, in this, to squall an argument, could you say who resides or, and/or pays taxes? Just to.
That would cover it, wouldn't it?
Because in the HAGO part, it falls into that, what Mary was saying about the HAGO, so, because it doesn't say resides, it says, you know. All we're doing is adding a couple of words to it and it'll clear, maybe, maybe it clarifies it.
I have no problem with that.
If you're okay with that, I'll just add the words in there. Okay?
Because there's clearly a lot of people who come up in the summer, and they're not residents here, so.
But they pay taxes, so.
And I couldn't see where the security deposit comes in.
What page is that on, Mary?
Well, in paragraph that, it says, important notes, additional fees, i.e. security deposit cleaning fee, may apply depending on facility and nature of use. I don't see in this.
In the form itself, in the actual application, under number nine, says, at signing this agreement, user also will pay, user will also pay the municipality's security deposit fifty dollars, non-refundable cleaning fee for classrooms, and a hundred and twenty-five dollar non-refundable cleaning fee for the gymnasium.
Okay, but then, when you go on to number ten, return of security deposit. Promptly after the event, the municipality will inspect the facility. If no damage has been caused to the facility, and if cleaning activities specified in section five of this agreement have been conducted so that the facility is in the same condition, or are very rare, blah, 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 and again, it refers to section five. If you go to section five, there's nothing.
I would take ten out, that was just a cut and paste on me. If, because we're not, originally, the original one had, they were getting some of it refunded. So it, it took it into account. But if this non-refundable, then.
That's where I'm saying, this has got to be a good document.
Okay, thank you.
So you're really saying I did a crappy job in building it, so I'm gonna fix it?
Well, if we're gonna.
No, I'm joking, I get it. No, I'm joking, I get it.
So you're gonna remove ten altogether, Mike? You're gonna take it right out?
I would take ten because they're not getting it, they're not getting it back.
Cross that right out.
Yeah, and it's not really a security deposit, it's a, it's a cleaning fee.
Right.
And I, and I got my numbers because I called the cleaning company and said, how much would you, you, you charge to do this? And versus, because originally, it was designed that, it, it said that they would be responsible for cleaning. And I'm like, really? I know I'm gonna get for a product, and then we have to buy the cleaning supplies to do it and provide that. It didn't make any sense. So I talked to Collette and she gave me the numbers and.
So you're gonna strike ten and renumber?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
User is responsible, I'm sorry, back to five, on page five of eight. Okay, back to five, which are on the second page of five, one, two, three, four, fifth bullet down. User is responsible for the cost of repairs to the facility required as a result of damage caused by user or user's employees, agents, contractors, licensees, guests, or invitees. I, I guess I don't, that confused me with all those users, users, employees, agents, contractors, licensees, guests, or invitees. I didn't understand that. I was guessing that that was a cut and paste from somebody else's document, but.
Well, so the user, if I come in there and I rent the space and I hire someone, say I have the caterer to come in and they bash a hole in the wall, and the person says, I didn't do it, the caterer did it. You know, like, but you hired the caterer.
Right.
That, that was the intent of it all.
Okay. And so, just so I'm straight, so somebody comes in and will say, basketball camp. So I know that I've seen before, so he's got one guy here collecting fees, and then he's got somebody down at the clock, running the clock. And whoever signs that form, which it could be the guy running the whole basketball clinic, but he's up at the college, and he's got two people down here. We don't want anybody from, watching from the town of Castleton representing us. We're gonna put it all on them.
What are you referencing it back to? That, that?
That nowhere in here do I see that anybody from the town of Castleton is watching out for our interest.
We don't do it for a lot of things. When they do the dance class, Mike was not in there when they do dance class. I mean, it's hard to write that, the stuff in there because I don't have, we have a staff of one. And every time that, if we really start renting that place, like AAU, or not AAU, but when Culpo does his basketball camp in there, he may not be there. He's got representatives down there. But they, sometimes they use it in hours that our rec coordinator's not there. But they have a key, they signed the key agreement. I mean, pickleball, you guys are in there and we don't necessarily have to be there for you guys.
Well, as long as he has signed that contract, knowing that he is responsible for any damage and cleaning costs.
It's the same with closing, you know, how many times have we had people using, whether it's the yoga class or the pickleball or whatever, using it, that they're, they're supposed to turn the lights off and lock the door. I mean, there's no foolproof way to monitor that. Because if they're done at nine o'clock at night, I mean, Mike has been pretty accommodating, but there's gonna come a parent where he can't be there.
We can't have somebody sit here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
He gets paid forty hours a week and he could spend a lot of those hours just sitting there watching, making sure that people don't do something in the building.
Well, I think having people sign this agreement will put them on guard. Hey, you're gonna be billed for, if there's a problem. You forget to lock the door, could cost you some money.
Yeah, and you lose your privileges to get in there. I think Jeff left. He was telling me about Greenwich, New York, is how many people have access to the high school? And I imagine the same is out here. There are restrictions, I guess, time-wise, you can't come in at certain, can't be in there at two o'clock in the morning. But, but they, they just have access and they have to do, follow the protocols to close it up.
Well, I have been here. I don't know how many of you have or if you haven't, but I've seen loads of kids in that handicap room. And I, and I broke them up kicking soccer balls in that handicap room. And the guys on the scoreboard, and the guys out here. And do you think they care when they get their paycheck from Mr. Culpo? They don't, I'm pretty sure. Because I have to help him figure out how to pull out the bleachers.
I think there's a way to, to be realistic about this, is when they sign this contract, that they do a walkthrough with the rec coordinator and they look at the area they're gonna use or the building in there, and they, we note if there's any deficiencies and if we find them afterwards, then.
Okay, so then you'll have those forms in place, because that'll have to go along with this.
No, I'm just talking about the, the inspection form? Yeah, we could add something to, to the inspection.
Not, not that everybody has to see, but again, so that we can make sure that MICA is successful. That's all I'm looking, is so that he has every opportunity to be successful. That he doesn't have a form here that can be shot right to pieces because there's inconsistencies and things for him to debate with people for at the door. That's all I'm looking for. I think this is a great start, I just think that there's some inconsistencies. Same going into the gymnasium use policy and taxes guideline. So this is now called the Recreation and Activities Center?
I made a sign for that.
Okay. I thought they were gonna vote on that, or somebody was gonna come up with that. I know you had brought up changing the name, but I didn't realize we had changed the name.
I, I don't think, this board has not taken any action on that. That's just something that.
We just need to call it something on the.
It's a good thing to call it now, short term. We can change the name six months from now if we so desire.
The only point I bring up for that is that groups like ours, all our documents are going based on yours. So like our 501(c)(3) applications, we're following what you're saying. So if you just keep changing everybody's title every time we hire somebody new, and you add a name, just keep that in mind that it adds to changing of documents for, for a lot of things.
I think that's, that was something you're gonna have to do, Mary, that's all. I mean, if the town changes something, it's, you're gonna have to go with it.
Well, if Mike Jones changes it, it's what this came down to, but.
Come on, you're really.
No, 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 that's fine.
You're needling me on this one now, so.
No, 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 this is just, so that is the name, regular staffed hours, so that will be on a sign somewhere? Because that's what people are gonna ask me for.
It's on that, it's on that sign.
Okay.
I asked Mr. Combs to make a frame for it so it matches the, the one that says CE or Castleton Village School. And what he's done is, is.
Done my rehab.
Yeah, but he said he would make a, so that's why it's not hanging right now.
Okay, so that's the sign for the name of the.
It's on the outside of the building, has the hours, the phone number, you know, the name of it and all that stuff.
And it's gonna have the name of the, the building, Recreation and Activities Center?
Yeah.
And same with the, this document, number one, advanced scheduling requirement. The one time it says Castleton Recreation Coordinator, and the next time it says Town Recreation Program Coordinator and Facilitator.
Okay.
So we probably just want some consistency here. Number four, responsibility agreement. Lead user must sign an agreement to supervise all activities, lock the building after use, follow activity rules, and report any damages. I think an event monitor is important, and I think you can get volunteers to do that. I think you have a lot of volunteers in this town, if we can just take a few minutes and organize a volunteer group. And I think they'd be more than willing to help protect something that so many have worked hard, hard to acquire. And priority of gym, gymnasium use, I understand that, clearly that you said that ten people would work at this and ten people would disagree. I just am concerned over numbers four and five and nine. Number four is town-sponsored youth sports programs, examples, schools, recreation-based youth basketball leagues, sports and clinics. The supervisory union abandoned this building. Abandoned. We were left to clean up the mess. And we have, a bunch of volunteers have worked really hard to clean up the mess, and taxpayers have paid to clean up a lot of the messes. And I'm just really concerned that school gets priority over adult recreation programs. When a lot of those adults are the ones that have done a lot of the work here. And when you say schools, that doesn't mean that they're Castleton residents. And the town of Castleton is flipping this bill for all of this. We got abandoned. You know, our neighbors to the north didn't want anything to do with it, so we bought them out. Our neighbors to the east are reaching, to the west, are reaching to us because they don't have a gym. We do. But at whose expense? Our expense.
But don't you think that when it says town-sponsored, that, that implies our town?
We don't own a school anymore. So it, it makes me nervous. The town of Castleton does not own a school.
But if we sponsor a program and we, they use the, like, elementary school and they can't use it, that's what I was thinking. I'm not talking about Fairhaven using it, or like, if something can't be done at the CE, at their elementary school and they need a place to practice, that, that's, that's what I'm kinda talking about.
When I read number four and I see town-sponsored, I, I read that as Castleton-sponsored, not Fairhaven. If Fairhaven wants to sponsor a program, they have to come through us to do it. And that isn't, that, and if the school wants to have a program in this school, they still have to come through us to do it. So I don't see an issue with that, where that would bump. If we've got an adult basketball program going and the town of Fairhaven wants to run a program, they can't bump it without this board's approval, in my opinion. Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah, but could Castleton Elementary School bump that?
No. They don't own this building, we do.
I get what Mary's saying. I think if anything, then you need to take the school out of that.
Well, that's an example, that's not, that's not, that's just an example, that's all that is.
But when other people are looking at it to get a means to use the, the building, then that's how it could be interpreted. But moving on, those, those concern me because for a town for adult recreation, adult recreation is darn important too because we have an awful lot of people, don't get me wrong, I've worked hard as heck for youth sports in this town. And I did a lot of open gym and everything last winter. I threw a ton for kids. But in all fairness, I think that we can't have school sports.
Why not?
Because it outranks adult recreation.
Why don't we just strike school or recreation-based youth and just start with basketball leagues, sports clinics, et cetera?
I think you could just scratch the school because if it's a recreation-based program from our recreation department.
Okay, yeah, just scratch school or.
I think solves our whole problem. Solves our whole problem.
Yeah.
And then that's still like, that still keeps it entirely within our control.
Because I would agree, because that goes back to us not being able to use their gymnasium up there with any of our recreation programs. Why should we allow them to use ours if they won't let us use theirs if we need it?
Yeah, strike the word school or
I guess one other ask would be, could we say Castleton-based recreation? Because we've got, um, other towns looking to use our facility. And would they bump our adult
No, I think town-sponsored is Castleton. I mean, it doesn't mean a town in California any more than it would mean a neighbor in town in here, you know, it's
Okay, just, just, I do know that other towns have come in and I just wanna make sure that, that our adults
Definitely Castleton residents.
I read, I read that as Castleton-sponsored.
That's why we put town-sponsored in there, because it's, it's supposed to
That infers that it's a town of Castleton.
Yeah, the building's gonna serve the taxpayers of Castleton first and foremost. With a slight priority on youth.
Castleton.
Castleton.
And then, uh, open gym, drop-in public is number, uh, way down to number nine. And, um, walking, I think walking, there was some mention in Mike, maybe you know, but it may be there was some mention of walking in here at some point, not, but it seems like walking, we have so many people who wanna come in in the wintertime and walk, that that could be a higher priority than number nine, because they don't have to get down into that gym.
Yeah, I think part of this is that the select board wants to, they wanted to have X amount of dollars come in to support this and walking doesn't really generate any money, but if you put a private function in there, we can work walkers' times around, but if someone wants to rent a, for a birthday party and wanna use the gym for their Rugrats to run around, and they're gonna pay a hundred and whatever dollars per hour, that, it trumps walking at that point. That's my opinion. We can accom, the walkers could go up in the hallway and not even use the gym.
That's what I said, right.
So it's just, it's, this is for gymnasium only. This isn't like any other part of the building.
And the walkers have it pretty much seven days a week, you know, so there'll be some times when they can.
Right, once the hours get posted, because I, I know some of them are coming now and they're not sure.
Yeah, Micah's, Micah started working with the
Micah, you have comment?
I wanna explain a little bit more context of how this document will be used. This is when I get a request for, for Haven for basketball, at the same time as youth basketball. They both wanna use the gym at the same time. Okay, Castleton is priority of that. But something like walking, where there's not necessarily a facility involved that's gonna have a conflict, they would get first priority on, on that, because there're not, there's nothing else. Again, it's to help me to be able to look at who gets the gym first or who gets this classroom first, how to kinda prioritize those as those come in. So if there's not any conflict in a facility, then even number nine would be bumped up, because nobody else is using that space.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted clarification on number nine in particular, so that other towns coming in to use the gym don't bump our adult programs.
Yeah, so, so if the gym's being, if the gym's already being used by a higher part, by a, a higher priority group, then that, then they would get it.
Perfect.
But if there's nothing already being existent, if there's nobody already using that space, that's, that's fine.
I would have a hard press for me. I don't, I, I mean, I'm all for the walkers in the town of Castleton, but if we have an $1,800 rental for basketball and somebody said, "I wanna walk in the gym," I'd be like, "I can offer you the gym at these hours, but the $1,800 rental's not gonna trump somebody wanting to walk in there."
Oh, and I'm not saying that at all, because I know during pickleball, for example, we, that's why there's red arrows and blue arrows, so that they can get their mileage in by following, uh, but red arrows, I believe, are the alternative route when the gym's busy. Probably the avid walkers know that better than me.
We can certainly revisit this in January or February if Micah says they have some concerns.
Yeah, we should, this should be a document that's open to
A working document. I mean, we're trying to get things off the ground here and get going. It's gotta start somewhere, so
And, and again, I, kudos to getting this up and running. I just, we're really interested, because I haven't heard a lot. These are just some of the things that stood out to me, this inconsistency. And on the form, on the back, when you acknowledge your key, uh, acceptance of your key, if you're here as a basketball coach, I don't know why at the end of the season you wouldn't turn your key. So, put an end date there when you should have to turn your key.
I'm sorry, Mary, I'm slipping pages. What, which page do I
Page five.
Under knowledge and acceptance?
Yep, that there should be a, a time when you turn in your key, when you're expected to turn in your key. Because I know coaches now that have keys from, and I was never asked to turn it back in, so I'm keeping it. But if we're gonna go electronic, then you can reprogram them, right?
Yeah, we can have the school can pull, pull it
So they can, so they can turn it back in.
If they don't turn it back in, we, they can also disable the card, so it can't be used. So, that, that's what I like about the electronic ones versus the metal key.
Just turn it off.
Sorry.
Well, I don't think having a expected return date is unreasonable.
No, I put it in there. I, I wrote it at the, add that language in there.
And then, again, only going back to the event monitors, all supervised, responsible key holder is to supervise all activities on rec gain now. That's a lot for whoever that coach is, who has the key, to watch over two towns' worth of peoples coming in for spectators, their little brothers and sisters, and the guy or gal is trying to coach on the far side of the gym. That is, that, that's a lot. Because they're gung-ho about coaching, they'll sign this, but realistically, to have them do that all by themselves, it's just not realistic and it's not realistic for the protection of our property. Last year was very effective. And we did see a difference when we did have the activity, uh, event monitors come in. And we, we actually announced, um, expectations. I don't know if you've done that in the past before, but we've done one. But here that has come in and that the, uh, parents were asked to keep their, the kids who are not on the court, to keep them, uh, near them, so they're not running up and down all the hallways, ripping down the, the bulletin boards. And you can't ask the poor coach to, to keep track of all that. That's a lot. And that's well over a hundred people for one person to keep track of. That's all. But I think this is a really good start.
Thank you, Mary. So the question I have to this board is, do we want to adopt the gymnasium use policy and access guidelines?
Do we wanna have Mike make the corrections first and look at it again, or do we wanna just adopt it with the corrections?
I think we should look at it again.
We just, nothing ever gets done timely, because we just drag this out. I made, I made all the changes. I could go, we could go over and say, prove it with the changes and you'll, I'll send you a copy of it.
But feel how we all feel with how long, oh, this rec stuff has taken. Just a little more time would be worth it.
If we've got the necessary changes, I would like to finish it up tonight.
I wrote, so if I could
We're gonna be here till 11:00 tonight. We'll be here till later on the next one if we review this for another hour. I mean, I don't wanna shortcut anything, but, but we, I wanna make sure we get it completed.
Yes. So under the Recreation, um, Gymnasium Use Policy, paragraph one, I wrote Castleton Recreation Coordinator and Facilitator. And I will correct that anywhere else where it does not say that. Um, under number four, Responsibility Agreement, the fourth bullet, report any damages or safety issues promptly. And I put to the rec coordinator and program it, coordinator, facilitator. Because I didn't say who to report it to. So if they reported it to somebody walking in there, that doesn't really count. Page two, Priority of Gym Use, number four, I struck out school.
Yep.
Or, school or, so let's just say, recreation-based use, basketball leagues, sports clinics. I could put et cetera after that. On, that was it. I haven't, anybody have anything else on that one?
End date for the key cards?
Yeah, I got, so I got the last thing for under five, uh, timeframe to turn in key. I'll, I'll talk to the Micah about it and be something realistic. You can't say it within, you know, one hour. All right. Anything else on that one?
That was everything I thought.
So on the Facility Rental Information and Guide, um, on paragraph one, third line starts with who rents the facility. I put, "For one hour or more shall get an additional hour at no cost." Uh, on page number three, Residency Determination, as it reads, it says, "A Castleton resident is defined as an individual who resides." And I put, "Or pays taxes within the geographic boundaries of the town of Castleton."
Pays real estate taxes. That clarifies it.
Um, on paragraph four, I, I made a note, it's the spell out, where it says, uh, first line, number two, first line, missed by at least seven days. I just spelled out seven. And down below where it says seven days, change there. Uh, no change on page four. I had no changes on page five. No changes on page six. Page seven, strike 10 for the security deposit. On page eight, nothing. And that's all I had for changes on that one. Anybody else have anything different? That's what I, those are the changes I would put on this, in this document.
I would make a motion that we accept the Town of Castleton Municipal Facility Rental Information Guide and Application and the Town of Castleton Recreation and Activity Center Gymnasium Use Policy and Access Guidelines with the changes that the town manager just noted.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, Mary.
I don't have an original, so I'm gonna pass mine around, Mike. Mike?
And Mike, I would recommend that you talk to Mary about
Nothing in the blue folder. Trust me, there isn't.
No, I'll, I'll get them to you. The ones you get will have the changes in it.
So I'll send this around for signature now?
I'll say an hour buffer is extremely expensive. Most of us have worked 15 minutes at the beginning, 15 minutes at the end and
This will give you
What are you doing, sent China, Russia, North Korea?
Are high in demand.
This'll give you the discretion to do what you feel fit. Do what makes sense.
I think the challenge I think we're also gonna come across, Anthony, is cancellations. And if we need to, people are like, "Oh, this person's not feeling well. We need to move our date. Are we gonna charge an additional fee on that?" So, some other things in the works.
And if you, if you come up with something, if you come up with something that makes more sense, let us know.
Yeah, there was something in there about
But we got a place to start.
You know our objective. We wanna serve the taxpayers and residents of this community, so they feel like continuing to own this building offers good value.
Absolutely.
And secondary to that, we would like to provide it for other organizations to generate some income.
There, there is a section on, um, the application part, um, 13, paragraph 13 is about cancellations. Because Christine brought it to my attention that what we had in there was not probably gonna work. So we had to change some language on that.
Well, I'm sure if you keep good notes in three or six months, we'll revisit this and you'll have some good suggestions.
Yeah, I think I might come at you guys with numbers, like, what will the facilities have to
We can make it better.
So, so while he's standing there, um, the, it was very refreshing that I, I said to him, "I really wanna have a automotive, basic automotive class in there. They'll teach people like how to jump start your car, how to check your oil, how to change a flat tire." A lot of people just don't know how to do that. And within less than 24 hours, he had reached out and got a response back from a local garage who said, "We'd love to do that." So, this, these are the little, the little things and I've, I volunteered to do a knot tying class. So, they're, so, I mean, just
A knot tying class?
Yeah, people love to, like, learn how to tie knots that are useful knots. So, um, I got a, a friend of mine who's gonna help me and we're, we're gonna teach a knot tying class. We're gonna get, try to get it set up.
I'll help you do that, too.
Perfect.
Those are the kind of things that I was like, "Yeah, I enjoy doing board games. I'll do a board game night for your daughter." And, or a cookie decorating, so I'm meeting that person sometime, kind of this week or next week and getting those, uh, drafted out and seeing what we can do. And let's make this building completed.
Good, that's our vision here.
So, you know, the three characters, let's have a good note.
My, my 10-year-old is beating the pants right out of me.
I don't remember. Easy to tie, stays tied, easy to untie. Oh.
Chess club would be a great idea.
That is a big one.
That's Navy.
Yeah. Easy to tie, stays tied, easy to untie.
What, no? All of them.
Pardon me?
If they don't meet that criteria, it's not good enough. Mr. Town Manager, I hope you can Let's generate enough money, so we can turn up the heat, because it's pretty frickin' cold in here. Getting cold.
And you're gonna keep me here until midnight.
My hands are I wish I'd brought more gloves. I think I've got a sweatshirt out in the truck. It's not pretty if you're
My fingers are cold. My nose
We're gonna make a, do a fire-starting class.
No pair of gloves?
Okay.
Yes, if you've got gloves.
Be serious, it needs to be serious.
No, no, it's not All right, let's move on. Stay focused. We got, we got work to do.
We're getting way behind you, yeah.
Made it very far.
We're way behind.
We're way behind. Stormwater
Show my hat?
No, my head's okay.
Okay.
Really?
All right, let's get back to work, folks. Um, we're gonna talk about the Blissville, or no, where am I?
Stormwater and Crystal Haven.
Stormwater, Crystal Haven. Um, real quickly, um, I talked to Mike the other day and, uh, engineers are moving at a glacial pace up there. And so we have decided to reach out to a couple of local vendors to see what it would cost to repair the culvert that's damaged at this point, at least to find out if it's even plausible or what it would cost if we decided to do that. That's really all I've got. Mark, you may have more to add, and Robbie, you may have more to add, because you were at the meeting with the engineers.
Um, I was at the meeting. I, I went back up there every time it's rained in the past week. You went there with me one time. It was ironic that Dick and I were at the downhill end of the new road and we saw a car pull in, uh, it turned out it was Hillary Solomon. She was doing the same thing that we were. And, you know, I'm no engineer, but it certainly looks like the majority, the, the water is dirty going through the pipe under the Kerns' property where it goes into the lake. It's, appears to be clear on the other side of the road. I, I really think that our first move would be to replace that pipe, which is, obviously, you had that camera, right? It's broken, so you know that there's silt intrusion into that pipe. I think that pipe should be sleeved or replaced and, uh, a settling structure on the north, on the east side of Crystal Haven Road, right in the corner. You know, a concrete structure, what are they, 500 gallons?
They're multiple, multiple size. We'd have to size it for the, the amount of stormwater they're predicting.
So the stormwater would settle, the, the stormwater would go into that structure, the dirt would settle to the bottom, the pipe would exit it three feet up and go through the Kerns' property into the lake. Additionally, I think that that new section of road, what do we call that?
Crystal Haven. East Crystal, East Crystal Haven.
That's the East Crystal Haven.
Needs to be crowned, so the water goes off to the sides of it and not down the face of it. And, and I would like to see us do that and then reevaluate where we're at and see if these additional settling ponds are necessary.
So I, I did speak with Mark, I talked to Dick, um, talked to Jeff. So I did reach out to a couple, um, contractors So I did reach out to a couple contractors to see their availability and give me some estimate. I think there was a discussion about where the seawall is, with the pipe going through the seawall that when it's replaced, that the seawall is, it's a nice job that's done. Where it come, where it exits out of the, out of the seawall. The structure, there's ledge there, so that's gonna be a concern, I talked, cause I talked to Jeff about after our conversation. That's ledge right there, we did take some of it out when they put that ditch in. I don't know how, I don't know how much work it's gonna be to get it out of there, but there's no way to put one in there without it, without getting that out of there. But it might, that usually becomes costly, but we also have our hammer now, so we may be able to take care of some of that, like, in kind.
If there's ledge there, would we need a concrete structure? Or would you just need to make a five hundred thousand gallon pocket there, line it with stone? So the water came down that drain and just stopped the water so the silt would settle before it went through the pipe into the lake?
I, I would like to defer that to somebody that's more qualified than me to answer it. But that's why I'm bringing in the contractors, cause they, you know, that's people that do stormwater stuff. And then the, the roads, the highway crew started up there, had to stop, they, they have to go back, they're gonna crown the road. Pitch it so the water gets off the roads into the ditches, clear the greater berm, so the water can get off the road into those ditches. Primarily into the, the, on the crossover, primarily to the north, that big ditch there, and not into the middle.
No water was going down though?
And then there's a culvert that Brad Turner had mentioned, that water's not getting through, so we're, we're gonna look at that as well.
On the crossroad?
Yeah, on the crossroads, the water doesn't go into his side, it goes out the other way.
Right, that culvert is higher on the north than it is on the south.
Brad, Brad's on, so he could, if you want.
Yeah, so there's, there's, the, the water flows from north to south at the, at the end of East Crystal Haven, before the right-hand turn. And then there's a zigzag that goes back about halfway down, and that's where the engineering crew, this, with the Stone Environmental. Had, had done elevation measurements or height measurements and they found that that zigzag back, pipe that goes back is tilted the wrong way. So it tilts back into the, into our wooded area. I never, we never really agreed, nobody ever asked us for tilting the original pipe into our land either. And that road is very close to the property line, in fact, on the west side where it comes downhill. It's probably, the construction guys that put in the road ripped out the property marker, the surveying property marker. It's either like right on the road or maybe a foot back is our property line. And as you saw, as you guys were there, it wasn't until just recently that somebody from the town came through with a, with a cutter and trimmed things back. But there's really no drainage ditch per se on that south border of that road. I would, I would like, we would like to have everything pitched towards that north side. Cause again, like you just saw recently, nothing's coming down that, that rock line ditch on the north side of that, of the new road. And I think that's where it belongs, the water belongs there, not getting dumped onto our side, the south side.
We agree with that, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, thank you.
So Jeff knows about that, so it's just, you know, when we go meet with the, the contractors, we'll lay out what the scope of work is and get a couple estimates to see what it's gonna cost or the feasibility of it, of it all, too. And then coordinate with the homeowner, the homeowners, or property owners, before we do any work.
Just one other thing, just to highlight to the, so I was able to, I coordinated with Hillary earlier in the summer to try and see if I could capture some water samples. And really, the only rainstorm we had during the year was at the end of July twenty-eighth, I think, or something like that. And I did capture, get a bottle, and coming out of Kerns pipe into the lake. And she got the results off of it and told us that, the meeting that we had a week or two ago with all the neighborhood people. And the stats were off the, off the chart, it was a thousand four hundred parts per billion. And she said normally, you know, if you had something in the four to six hundred range, that would be really high. Normal, I think she was saying normal tributaries, if you guys correct me if I'm wrong, she was saying should be in like the twenty-seven range. So the amount of silt and phosphorus all that's flowing through that line is really, really high. And again, as you saw, you guys all saw that video that we took, that was the, that was the event where I took the sampling. So you saw the culvert, the water that comes, flows north up West Crystal Haven. And finds its way into the ditch or just goes onto Tom's property unfortunately. Is, is, you know, very dirty and what comes through that culvert along West Crystal Haven is really dirty. Not much comes down through that, through that stone line ditch on the north side. But water was streaming down the, that new, the new road piece that flows towards the wet, downhill, towards the west, towards the lake. A lot, the water was coming through that, finding its way into that ditch to the south. Or it was flowing into Tom's property unfortunately. That, that's what that video that you all saw was, was showing us, so.
Right, the water was on the surface of the road.
You know, there was the proposal for that deep subcatch basin at that intersection there. Is probably a good first step and allows you to then get things cleaned up on the line that runs into the lake. So Tom can have a better experience than having all that stuff running through there.
I think Hillary was back up there taking another sample.
She took, Mark crawled on his belly to reach down to take a sample for Hillary. The day, was that Monday we were up there, this past Monday, a week ago?
I don't know, Tuesday, Wednesday, someday, whatever day it rained hardest.
Yeah, and we took a sample that day too, but we have not seen the results of that yet.
Yep, sure thing, yep. Yeah, and Mike had the road guys up there already dumped a whole bunch of stone and, and trying to do some, you know, leveling out of the road and all. So I don't, I'm not sure what their plans are for more, but they've already been up there and done a lot, so thank you, Mike, for kept, I taking care of.
You're welcome, they'll, they'll be back, they know that what they did was just kind of a Band-Aid right now.
Yeah, okay, you know, the biggest thing for us is trying to engineer it so it doesn't run down that East Crystal Haven Road right towards Carol O'Quinn's property or our property or into Tom's property, those are the big concerns, right? Try to, try to redirect that stuff into existing culverts.
That is our short-term goal, sir. That's, that's our priority, that's the first thing we're trying to do. Get the water off the road and into the ditches.
It's not gonna be, it'd be a contractor helping us through this, cause our guys are not, that's not their forte, if that's for sure.
Anything else? You're welcome. Anything else on this topic before we move on?
What does it mean for the seawall?
The seawall is actually not in bad shape, in my opinion. We're going to have that evaluated as part of this process. I am not going to commit to repairing that seawall or replacing that seawall at this point in time.
The engineer said that the pipe has to be upside. Hillary's engineer.
I am aware that the engineer recommended a higher, a bigger size.
If, if all the other stuff was done above it. We're not sure just with that one small catch basin, if the engineer's gonna need it bigger or not.
That is correct.
Needed to be bigger as far as those two plans that they had showed us were, so it's all gonna have to be refigured again.
As I said, I'm aware that they recommended a bigger size, that isn't necessarily where it's all gonna sugar off, but. Anything else?
When are, when are you proposing the contractors are gonna meet up there, Mike?
We've reached out to them to try to get, and they're the same day, so that, that when we explain the work, that everybody hears it the same. Cause a lot of times, my experience is, when you talk to contractors who do this for a living, what we ask them to do, they, they can go, eh. That might not be the way you wanna go.
So you have no idea when you're gonna meet?
Jeff has reached out to several contractors, so I, I don't know what they've come up with for a date yet. I didn't reach out to him personally, Jeff was reaching out to him. I, I contacted them today about the village school, not about the stormwater.
Okay.
Can we just make sure we get ahold of Tom when that happens, so that we can get-
Wanna make sure-
Permission and whatever to go onto his property.
Absolutely. And anybody else that we're gonna, you know, affected by this, in that area? Brad. You know, where it's going, where water's actually going the wrong way into his property rather than going out.
Talk about paving the salt shade apron.
I handed out to you a quote from Fabian's. No, that's not it. I just looked at it, so-
Got the one from Wilk.
Yeah, the other one from Wilk, yeah, exactly. Sorry, it's getting late. So the, the, the quote from Wilk is the one that we have. I reached out to GW Paving, and for some reason, I verified their, their email address and she's not getting the email. But it's too late, by, they should, they had to have it to me by Friday. And so the only quote we have is from Wilk Paving, which I went back and looked at the minutes of the meeting and I looked at the, listened to the recording with Jeff, and there was discussion about Fabian's doing the final, fine grading for that area. And there was a discussion about the pa, the paving, but there was no motion ever made. So there's, so I told Jeff he couldn't have him do the work until I bring it before the select board tonight. And so Wilk's sitting there waiting to be given the permission to do their, do the gra, or do the asphalt. They've got their little grader, they added up there last week.
This is with, was within the original scope of work and it's also within the budget that we were authorized to spend on this project, correct?
It's definitely within the budget, but it was something that he had to add in. He had to change, say he, Tim Rice from Wilk had to add something in there because there was a portion missing near the edge of the building, so that was added.
So what are you looking for, all three of these?
One, two, and three. Correct.
Well, we're only weeks away from the end of asphalt season, so.
Day, day before Thanksgiving is when they're planning on shutting the thing down, so they, they were sitting there last week ready to go and I told them, you had to wait. Said he won't know until Tuesday morning.
You have the lighting in yet?
What's that?
You have the lighting in yet? The lighting?
Not yet, not yet.
That's under the, underway as well?
Yes.
So this'll complete this project?
Yes, if this is, the, once that's done, the electrical and that is it.
Okay, what's your pleasure, Board?
I would make a motion that we accept the bid from Wilk Paving as we have in front of us for the paving in the original plan. As well as the apron and the fine grading for a total of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Oh my god, if this, once it's done, it's just done, right?
Okay, salt, let's talk about salt, we're gonna move, we're gonna get this done, guys.
Jeff had, on the back page, he'd put down the, the, the quotes from Cargill, Appalachian American. Which American isn't doing anything that, that's weird stuff, so it's between Appalachian and Cargill. And he's asked to go with, highlighted the Cargill. Treated per ton for a thousand tons, and then he, somewhere, then every down below. He would like to use twenty-two thousand five hundred from the remaining fifty-two thousand six hundred that was normally in there for the sand. We didn't buy winter sand this year, but he, he used some of the money to buy stone out of it, to mix with it. So there's fifty-six thousand two hun, or fifty-two thousand six hundred remaining, and he wants to buy additional two hundred tons of Clear Lane salt. So that's where the total-
He wanted to go with Cargill over the other one?
Yes.
We've used Cargill before, I'm assuming, and had good experience.
They're the ones that we've had, used for the last few years. So is it, what is there, a thousand, no, fifteen hundred dollar difference?
Well, it's nice, we've got the capacity for it now. And it won't go bad if we don't use it.
Well, that's what he's also looked at, he was talking to them, and there's also, they're predicting another, this year another salt shortage. And he's like, then you don't know if you're gonna get the extra two hundred tons, and it's in a nice new shed, so it's not gonna go bad, so the price probably won't go down next year.
And it seems like we've been having in the past few years, a lot of that warm, cold, you know, icy conditions.
We put salt down, anyway, it's-
What's the shelf life on salt, millions of years, right?
I mean, as long as it doesn't get wet, which, that new building, if it gets wet in there, we're screwed anyway, so.
It's been in the ground for millions of years.
We approve Jeff to use twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the remaining fifty-two thousand six hundred sand budget. To purchase an extra two hundred tons of Cargill's Clear Lane salt.
A second?
That is delivered, yes.
So you only need the motion for the additional purchase or for the original?
No, for the whole thing, too.
So you keep going, Mark. For a total of?
One thirty-five would be the total. Cause you got that plus twenty-two five.
Yep, for a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I'll still second it.
You sure that's right, Mark?
I gotta say, is that-
Cause a thousand tons at a hundred and two dol, a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents a ton is a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred.
Yeah, but total with the twenty-two five is the-
For that extra two with the extra.
I thought the eight hundred tons that we had budgeted plus the thousand included the twenty-two five, am I right, Mike?
No, we, we've- Oh god, now you got me. We normally buy eight hundred with additional two hundred added to it. And I think what he was asking here was to buy an additional two hundred on top of that.
He wants to buy-
So total of twelve hundred.
Okay, this was not clear.
Right, it's not clear.
So your motion stands, so, and so for a total of, so did you get there, I don't remember exactly what you said. Did you get that far in your motion, Mark?
I did get that far, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got Rob doing the math for me here, so I sound smart.
Worst case is, if, if this was wrong-
It's still not right. It's still not right, didn't he already add the twenty-two five to the ninety thousand? That's what I thought. Do you guys see that? You're, I think you're right, Dick.
Here, here's what I'd ask you to do.
At this point, I don't have a clue.
Authorize what you just did, and I'll clarify, and if it is less, we're just gonna spend less money.
Say up to.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second it twice.
I did have a second.
Yeah, I see what you're saying now. You're right, the total is one twelve five hundred.
But you have a motion on the table for a hundred and thirty-five.
I would amend that motion.
Let's just leave it.
I would just, cause if, if he only really meant the thousand, then we won't, we won't go above it, but.
All in favor? Blissville Road tree removal quotes, that's a non-issue at this point. That road, that tree is in the town right of way, but it is not on town property. I could, I would suggest we have the, the tree ward and evaluate it for risk and call that good, what do you think? Board?
I don't know anything about the tree on Blissville, other than we've got two quotes here.
I drove by it, it's a dead tree, in the town right of way.
It was dead thirty-five years ago when I bought my house. Huge maple tree had twenty-five leaves on it, each year it's gone down by one. And each year a branch falls off it and lands in the middle of the road and I go out and move it.
How many branches could be left on it?
Not that many, but it is very, very tall. And, and a bunch of neighbors have come over and said, you know, that's gonna kill somebody, and, and it certainly has the potential to do that.
Has our tree ward evaluated it for risk?
They, they both went and looked at it.
And they can't take it down, cause it's so tall and dead at the top. That, that's why they had, Mike had two bits on taking it down.
So do we wanna set the precedent of taking down trees in the town right of way that are not on town property?
I don't think this is a precedent, cause this is one that endangers town infrastructure and safety.
I'm staying out of it. You guys went over your, the, the policy, so I'm not gonna try to take-
That's the difference, and I'm not that freaked out about it one way or the other. I, I do think it does have the potential. You know, it's falling all the time, and, and take a look at it tomorrow. It's almost across the road from my driveway, you know. If the top of that falls and, and hit a car or a school bus, you know, it would be catastr- If the top of that falls and, and hit a car or a school bus, you know, it would be catastrophic.
And this, the question goes back to what Mr. Crowley said, at that point, if it does fall and it's on your property, and it falls in the road, hurts someone, is that on the homeowner? Or the town? I don't know, that's, that's, but anecdotally, there, there's a, you know, y'all know Jim Bruno. Jim had a dead tree in his front yard, piece, big piece fell off into the road. I get a phone call, big piece of tree, we took out what we could, we can't move it all. Just letting you know, so you can get the crew up here, it was, or works called me. And so, I called on the crew, and they went up there with a loader, and Scott met him up, there was a chainsaw, they bucked it up, took it out of the road. I got, by the time I got there, the lady was cleaning up some stuff, and I looked at Jim, I'm like, that's your tree. And so he, he was reaching out to get somebody to come in, maybe with a lift, man lift, that was tall enough, and to be able to safely get, cause it's dead at the top. And nobody wants to cut it from the bottom, cause you, you might be seeing your maker. So he, he was gonna try to handle it on his own before bringing the town into it, but. Now that's, cause he said it's, well, it's really my tree, I guess.
The tree warden looked at that one on Blissville, that isn't in the town right of way?
It doesn't matter if it's in the town right of way or not, we just passed a hazardous tree policy that we're not responsible if it's in the right of way.
Unless it was threatening.
Unless it threatens public safety.
No, the town's responsibility is limited to hazardous trees that are located on property owned by the town and pose a direct threat to town-owned infrastructure or public safety, not and/or.
Oop, there's a technicality.
I shouldn't have approved that, cause I don't agree with it. I do. Well, I don't. Where are you gonna draw the line, Bob? It's in the town right of way, but the town, why is that? It's in the town right of way.
But the right of way, when you read the statutes that were provided in your packet, it talks about the right of way, and just.
The homeowner owns that.
It's just, we have, we have a responsibility to maintain the right of way.
So stay out of the town's right of way on my property, is that, is that what you're telling me?
Only, we should only be in your right of way if we're trying to protect.
No, the town's right of way, you just said the town's right of way.
Right, but it's still your property, so, so long as, we shouldn't be on your property in the right of way if we're not doing something that is, preserves the safety of the road, or culvert, or something like that. We can't go, or if a tree is.
Okay.
When we're mowing, and like, you can't pull to your driveway, cause you look down the road and there's, we, we have the right to come through and mow back to, you know, so people can see.
About ten years ago, there was a big dead maple tree on my front yard, and I called Paul Egan and said, this is in the town's right of way, this tree's gotta come down. He says, not our tree, your problem. That was the town policy ten years ago. And then, well, then I, well, then I called Green Mountain Power, and they came and took it down.
Yeah, yeah.
But now, Green Mountain Power doesn't do that anymore.
Actually, they do, they just started doing it again.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they didn't as of.
Like, like a month and a half ago, two months ago, we, we reached out to them and they said, nope, cause they looked at a couple of trees for us.
Well, they are, because they got a private company going around doing it, he's coming to my house to do my tree.
They, they had Davies up there at.
Yeah, not Davies, but.
So anyways, I, so you can make a motion, Mark, but I don't.
I have a question.
Yes, Mary Lee.
A dead tree in your right, town's right of way, on my property, came down and hit a car.
It did.
It did. The town came and took the tree away, I don't know, my insurance didn't pay anything for her car, I don't know if the town did or not.
We, we reported to VLCT, but I, you know, haven't heard anything back, or they, they settled on that, cause a lot of times, they'll go after your insurance. VLCT, that's what they'll do.
So once it's in the road, the town's gotta pick up the pieces.
Yeah, we, we end up picking up this, cause that's, now it's a hazard for someone hitting it and driving over it, or whatever.
Without this po, without this policy in place, for example, you could have, I'll pick Drake Road, cause that's what he was saying, all those trees that are in the town right of way, down along Drake Road right there, there's a lot of hazardous trees through there. And a lot of them could potentially fall, and they're gonna be high on, you know, they're gonna be a hazardous tree, so we gotta cut them all?
Right. Okay, I'm ready to move on.
So am I. Everyone else ready? Field culvert, little bit. Will you stop and at least look at the tree? Stop and look at it, I already did, already did, okay, it's a dead tree, okay, it's still dead, it's been dead for thirty years. It hasn't come back to life. And I do agree, it's potentially something's gonna fall out of it someday, and hopefully, nobody's driving down the road. But I'm gonna be the hard you-know-what here and say, where do we draw the line?
Okay, that's the policy we just signed, I had misread it.
And unfortunately, that, that's based on state statute, like, that's not just something the town of Castleton is making up, like, we don't wanna do it. It's the same as if it's a state right of way, you know, all that stuff, the homeowner owns the tree.
Yep.
We have to.
Sucky as that is, that's just how, that's how it is.
And if we have to start taking down all the dead trees in town, then we're gonna have to, then we're gonna have to change our budget to, to.
Reflect that.
Reflect that.
I said that to you guys a while ago, you could give me two hundred thousand dollars, and it won't take down all the, the nasty dead trees that are in town.
Wouldn't even start.
And when he said five hundred dollars to take down a tree, Mike, let us know that, because we, I've now found a five hundred dollar.
All right, let's move on. Field culvert, Little Rutland Road, what's, what is there to talk about?
That's what I'm passing out, sorry. I spit on that one, so I'll give you one of this.
This isn't our culvert, is it? I looked at this culvert, this isn't our culvert.
Mark, thank you, that makes a big difference.
Oh, good. Glad I could be of assistance.
Don't move papers very well.
So this culvert, so I'm glad that Heath's here, he stuck around. This, so what, what's happening right now is Jeff, Jeff came to me and said, he wanted to apply for a Better Roads grant, and he wanted to use it on Little Rutland Road. And I said, God, we've already had three grants up there, what are we fixing now? And he brought to my attention that, that culvert, that if you, if you bend down Little Rutland Road, you get to the bottom, you take that hard left, you know, otherwise you're going in the lake. Was that, that big house to the right, who owned it? You remember?
It was a grain company guy.
Yeah.
He has their Green Mountain.
Duttel.
Yes, Duttel.
Duttel.
Yeah, so, um, they put in a culvert under the road without town permission.
Not under the road?
Under their building, or whatever. But there's a, so there's a, somewhere it's failing, something's failing there, and Jeff was wanting to apply for a grant to do this, and I was like, but why are we gonna fix something that's not our responsibility? Now, the culvert that's on the road.
Is ours, that one's been there.
Yeah.
And they connected to the end of it and run it down across there, cause they didn't want the open ditch anymore. They connected to the end of it and took it back down through a storm drain system beside their garage, down to the lake. We, we went through this years ago, when Paul was here, there was a bunch of photos taken of it, when they done it. Who's the surveyor? Corcel went up and did the survey to see how far they were into the town's right of way. And then, nothing ever got done. They connected somehow to our culvert with their culvert, and to me, that's looked like where the fail is. It is plugged.
So they're trying to figure out how to get through this, but if the culvert that runs on the roads ours, then we have a responsibility to change it. But if it caused dam, the water, where they connected onto it illegally, and it backed up, did anything that caused damage on their property, I'm like, I don't think we're, we should be responsible for that part, cause they connected to it illegally.
Right.
So.
Yeah, they should have to remove everything.
At night, over the weekend connection.
Yeah, they should have to disconnect from our culvert.
Yeah, well, I guess, I wasn't, I remember when I first got here, this was all going on, but, so there, there was an open swale that they.
It was an open swale that they closed in.
And it literally goes underneath, like a driveway parking area, and there's another, they have another structure down below it, like a, almost like a guest house, or whatever it's called, but they have a, like a drain there, and, I mean, they, it's pretty elaborate, and, but I'm like, if something failed on your part, because you connected illegally to our system, even if we never cleaned that culvert out.
And ours failed because you connected to it.
Right, and I'm like, so even if we, say we failed to clean that culvert out for twenty years, and all that silt washed down into theirs, I'm like, you shouldn't have connected to it then.
Yeah.
And I think, I think Mrs. Duttel was the attorney that represented Tier Sobranic. Remember at the, about the, renting the, the village school. So, but, so he wants to apply for the grant on here, and I, so I just wanted to give you a copy of the grant application. So you saw what he wanted to apply for and the pictures associated with it, so we're trying to flush it out right now, but if it's, if they're gonna try to claim damage on their property because they illegally connected to our culvert, I think that would be a high-o, not our problem.
Why is that? I went to grade the road, and I noticed it was plugged, and so they sent Mike up to clean it out, and then it was plugged all the way across the road, so.
Not me, Mike Smith.
Mike was up there with a shovel.
Straw.
How long ago was that heat, that was?
Last week is when I found it.
Oh, you were running the grader last week?
Yeah, last week, I went up to help him.
So you don't need anything from us on this right now?
No, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and, cause if it comes down to that point where they're claiming that something, we did damage to their property, just so you're aware, ahead of time, that. But, so when we apply for the grant to fix our culverts in those segments, that would be legit, but anything above and beyond that, outside of that, would not be ours.
Let me ask Heath one question, before that swell was closed in, did that culvert ever have a problem?
Not like it does now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you're here, cause you have the history, you're like the history guy.
Real quick, when are you gonna take care of that? When are you gonna get it unplugged, or is it unplugged?
I have no idea what they're gonna do with it after, and they flushed it out the other day and cleaned the ditch below it, so the water can keep going down around the corner, but I, I don't know.
We can't go in and start digging up their infrastructure.
Not their infrastructure, but our culvert.
Theirs is what's blocking our culvert.
Okay, but.
They connected.
When they tried to pressure, when they tried to wash out our culvert last week.
Yes.
The water blew up the middle of their lawn.
Oh, boy.
It's this culvert right here that goes.
That's, that's, that's what the damage I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, our culvert is unblocked now?
It's old, the ditch is clean, and it's on, and they washed it out, but the water started coming up in the middle of their lawn.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the water will go through that, so it doesn't flood on the other.
The other day after it rained, it went through it.
Okay.
And came up in their lawn.
But it went through it.
Okay, all right, it went downhill, right?
Is that on the end of West Crystal Haven, I think it came out?
Jesus. All right.
All right.
It was uncalled for.
It's all right. RPC recap visit, did anyone go for the ride with Rutland Regional when they did the county tour?
Well, I met them down in front of Roy's house. I mean, there wasn't much that happened.
Give us the Reader's Digest version.
Oh, you didn't take the tour?
No, we just stood at Pine Street.
Cause they went to other towns, and so, but you had to jump on, in Rutland, to jump onto the bus to take the tour, cause that's where the bus ended. So if you, if you jumped on at Roy's, you would've been in Rutland going, I need to ride home.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they got out and, and kinda talked about the meetings that we had, and how, if we got tier one B status, how it would affect the town, and I said, you know, I think that this program is great, I'm not sure it's gonna affect Castleton any, you know. To promote building housing where there's already infrastructure, and I'm not sure where in Castleton that we already have infrastructure, we're gonna see building that would require Act two fifty. You know, I, I read a great story in Virgin's, a guy was gonna build a nine-unit apartment building, and once, because of this status, he's gonna make it not only a ten-unit apartment building, but he's gonna build three of them.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that's perfect for Virgin's, is that gonna happen here? I don't think so.
The space that we have with infrastructure, or soils that are suitable for septic and stuff?
Well, that's the thing, that, that you only get this status where there's water and septic. So if somebody bought the old Iron Lantern property and wanted to build some sort of cluster housing, I guess, they wouldn't have to go through Act two fifty.
But they'd still have to go through our permitting anyway, so.
But they'd have to go through our permitting anyway, so I don't know if it affects Castleton at all. And at the end of it, Roy wanted to speak, and he said, this is one more layer of government control, and I'm opposed to it. And it was like, no, Roy, this is less government control, this is reducing Act two fifty in certain areas, but that was about it.
All right, then we'll move on, errors and omissions.
These are to our favor.
Someone care to make a motion?
I would make a motion to accept the errors and omissions by the Board of Listers of the town of Castleton for twenty-twenty-five as presented by, wasn't Mary Jo, looks like she?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think last time you guys did this, you actually added the parcel number in there.
Okay, add the two parcel numbers, just to.
For span number one-two-nine-zero-four-zero-one-one-six-eight-nine, and one-two-nine-zero-four-zero-one-zero-six-eight-one.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You notice that these are positive numbers?
Mm-hmm.
But just wait, there'll be some negatives coming.
Thank you.
We already did those.
Yeah, there, there might be more coming.
What's today, twenty-seventh?
Correct.
Okay. Tax sale, no, here's, tax sale policy, now, when I looked at this, Mike, do we have to change our policy to read fifteen hundred instead of five hundred on the front page?
Yes, we're gonna change, cause of that new state statute.
That's what I thought. This might be a good time to throw out a statement on how much is monetarily is delinquent. Cause between sewer and real estate taxes, it's quite substantial.
It is, so in that packet, you were provided the sewer collections and the property tax collections, and if you notice, towards the bottom, it says, there's a breakdown, it says sewer, it's like three, four lines from the, from the bottom, it says sewer, principal, interest, penalty, that column, or that row, I mean. And then it says prior years, and if you just go all the way over to this, to the right, it tells you total due, and then the current year, slide all the way to the right, and it tells you the current due.
Yeah, fine.
So to, to make, to bring it to your attention, we're, for sewer taxes, from prior years, eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents is what we are still owed as a town for sewer. And then the current year, it's not over yet, so that numbers will change as we, each quarter, we collect sewer. But then the big one, you look at the next page for the taxes, do the same thing, go to the outstanding balances prior years, three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And again, I wouldn't worry about this year's at this point, cause we're just.
Not there yet.
Yeah, but again, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in back taxes owed to the town of Castleton, some of it goes back into two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
So four hundred and sixty-eight thousand between the two.
Some of it's ten years old.
It is, and so now, the criteria that they, they changed, it has to be delinquent for one year, and the, and the dollar amount. So what I, the reason I wanted to bring this to your attention is, A, we're gonna have to change the policy, and two, we haven't really gone after, I'll say gone after, cause that's really a bad choice of words for me. As, to go, to go and talk to those that have delinquent taxes, and say, are you gonna pay it, you wanna go on a payment plan? We kinda have just simmered it and said, okay, they only, they're only five hundred dollars in behind. But you start looking at the ones that are two thousand thirteen, they're never gonna catch up, because the interest and penalties that they pay, by their policy, that's where it gets applied first. So they're always, and their current taxes are always gonna be behind, and then it'll go into delinquency, and they're already getting the penalties on it. So it just keeps compounding itself. What, what I've seen is when a property goes to tax sale, it lights a fire under people, as much as I hate to say this, cause I don't, I wouldn't wanna be in that situation. So I kinda can sympathize, but is, you just put it up, I'll put everything up for tax sale that is, is a, that meets a criteria, and if it's only five hundred dollars, I'll bet you they'll pay that five hundred dollars, cause they're not gonna wanna see their property go to tax sale. And we've done it the last few times, and only one property went to tax sale, everybody made those moves to get caught up. made those, um, moves to get caught up. And if we get caught, if we get caught up on that and instead of three hundred and eighty thousand, we get it down to eighty thousand, that's three hundred thousand dollars in ta, tax revenue that, when we anticipate each year that we're gonna get X amount based on our grant list and all that, and we don't make it, it affects our bottom line. You know, cause it, it doesn't pay, it doesn't pay for the operating budget or this, you know, it, it puts us in a bad spot. Luckily, the Town of Castle is, um, financially stable, where we haven't had to borrow money to pay the, the taxes, um, when we're, don't make what we're supposed to, um, but there'll come a day when the, that pony that, I think we're at like four hundred thousand dollars in the general fund unassigned, undesignedated, so if we have a bad year, we don't get that money, that four hundred could be gone in a heartbeat.
We got a lot of errors and omissions coming too that would.
It's gonna lose, gonna do a number on it.
So, um, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, so you can see the numbers, and I wanted to get it on, out in the open, so people know, um, that when you don't pay your taxes, how it affects, you know, and I get it that people are struggling and I'm not gonna take that lightly or make light of it, but for everybody that does pay their taxes and contributes to the operation of the town and the school, the school taxes, um, it puts a, we still have to pay those school taxes, whether you pay your taxes or not.
And they at least gotta start a payment plan of some sort.
Yeah, and that's why, I think the town has really, um, been, worked well with those people to bend over backwards and try to help them, even some second chances, uh, because no one wants to see someone lose their house.
No.
So, but.
But we don't wanna see that burden put on their neighbors either.
Yeah, but it's been at least one landlord we've given multiple chances to.
But one person that was habitual offender, finally when that tax out, they're settling it. So all those back taxes that were owed, we're now gonna get, they'll be paid. And I, I mean, that must be a, a lift off someone's shoulders too, that knowing that the tax man's not gonna be, you know, hounding them. So, um, but that's, that's where we're at, we'll bring back the, the ta, the policy when we get it changed for your review, and then, um, as we get towards spring and get closer to the end of the tax year, we'll, we'll get a better assessment of maybe some people have paid some stuff, and then bring you a list of, uh, properties for tax out.
Anything else on this? Any questions for Mike?
No. No, it's the ungrateful part, but it's gotta be done.
Town report dedication discussion.
Uh, I only received one kinda request for that, and that was from Tom Hughes, um, he recommended, um, two people, even though it's outside of the, the timeframe of the, the report, last year that happened too, cause if you're gonna honor someone or dedicate something, waiting another year to make it into the next report, sometimes, especially like with Joanne retiring, you know, by a year from now or a year and a half from now, it's not gonna have the same meaning. So that, this is just a, a recommendation from one individual, but I, as we're getting closer to preparing this year's town report, uh, I wanted to get it early on the select board's radar to who you might be considering.
I like that, those two people.
I was gonna bring her up, but I liked the pair of them.
I mean, Jo, Jo, he was a select one, he has a sale camp.
DRV is on.
Yeah, he, he.
Yeah, he does a lot for the town.
Done a lot of things for the, for the Town of Castleton.
When all those young men from the hockey team were down there working on the cemetery by the Federated Church, who do you think was there in the middle of that? It was Joe.
Meals on Wheels.
For years.
Joanne Riley has really done a lot with that community center, from what it was when she started.
And Jo's been the biggest fundraiser for the community center.
He teaches classes there, you know, so.
Ten thousand dollar grant from the Red Sox a few years ago for the community center.
Looking.
Yeah, he went down to the stadium and had lunch with a bunch of big wigs and some players and.
Awesome. So, but there, there's some ideas anyway, two, two ideas for the, um, for the, I think last year we had three, when, um, there was Melanie Combs, um, Nancy Trudeau and Ba, not Bob Ward, I think it was the year before that, but there was three of them anyway. Um, so it can't be more than one person.
I like this idea and I don't have a better one.
Speaking of that, Joanne, tomorrow is her retirement party from one to four at the community center. If, uh, anybody had five minutes to stop in, I know she'd be.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, one to four, she'd be very appreciative, she's done a lot for the town.
Got a captive audience, cause I have a staff meeting tomorrow. We don't need all the food.
Give me, but I'm gonna put that in my calendar right now.
You could, yeah. What it does for us, it gives us time to talk, talk, get the research and get the photos and the write-up and stuff like that.
I'd like to make a motion that this year's town report is dedicated to Jo Mark and Joanne Riley for all the work that they've done for the Town of Castleton.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Who's second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Which one are they?
It's the college.
College. Um, I would make a motion to approve a first-class restaurant bar license to Sedexo Operations LLC. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to.
Nay, nay for me.
Okay. Would make a motion to approve a third-class restaurant bar license for Sedex, Sedexo, Sedeco, Dexo Operations LLC. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay for me.
Manager's report. If you list the bullets, Mike.
Yeah, see, there's only a, a few bullets that are really pertinent to. One, the big one on page one, um, I, I was able to finally get that, uh, that request to add the lighting into that scope, uh, or the proposal to V-Trans, uh, it was acknowledged by Pete Bochop and just waiting to hear back from him, but that was something I was late on getting to them, so that's done. Um, we only really have one truck down, um, I'm, this is on page six, um, no, that's Transfer Station, um, so he's, so he's here, um, that truck, um, Evan fabricated that support post for the back of the truck, I don't know what the technical name of it is, um, so that the, the one that's on there, the cylinder can be shipped to Casellas, right? Cause they, they did do it for a while, but now they are doing it again, so he's made the appointment, so when that comes off, it'll get sent out to be rebuilt, and the posts on the back will just, it won't, it won't have a cylinder, it's just gonna be a straight post, um, to, you know, steady the back of the truck, I guess, when you're putting the, when you're loading or unloading the bin.
This is a transportation station truck?
Yeah.
The hydraulic cylinder that has an extender, extender hoist on it for the back, you can run the back stink out, like the stinger out on the back of it, that cylinder's leaking. He's, Evan's now made a bar to keep it solid while the cylinder's out, so we can keep using the truck.
Perfect. That will go out for rebuild, thank you Heath for scheduling that.
I blew on it today.
I didn't hear that one. Um, Evan, Evan's always full of good news. Um, still waiting to hear back from Aldridge and Elliott for this, um, RFP, um, and I was out most of last week, so, um, he, he didn't call me, cause I, I would get it if he called me, but, um. Main pump station, the quotes for the roof, uh, one had a quote for putting metal over the existing shingles and one was for stripping it and putting metal on it, so it wasn't the same, so I, I had to get that fixed. Um, paving on East Hubbard Road is completed, they're just, they're working on aprons, putting aprons down. Um, the Chevy 6500 still not done, uh, two weeks, that's, that's what we get. Uh, single axle is over at Earl's for that, uh, Trent, that, uh, coolant line, um, once it's back, uh, Evan's gonna put the plow on it, undercoat it, and we, minus that 6500, we should be ready to, he's got, he's got one he's working on now, but we should be ready to rock and roll for winter. Um, I haven't moved Micah yet to the front office, because I gotta get the, um, they'll be there tomorrow morning from Roy's to run, run the cable, um, so I can get him out of that back room and up front. Uh, we talked about the bike thing, Crystal Beach Ford Camera was done. Um, while you're here Heath, um, it sounds like the grant that was applied for, for the AFG grant, uh, for the fire station, we didn't hear any of that, any, any positive and, or denial, did you get a denial?
I didn't get a denial, I didn't get it on the website, because it was ever much shut down.
Yeah, I, I tried to get it on the website and it said, due to the government shutdown, this website's not being monitored, so, um, I still need to come back to the select board with the painting for the garage, the, the work, just wanna get on that guy's docket before he changes his mind about the price. Um, took care of the salt shed. Um, so Christine's been working hard on getting the, uh, the key control stuff done, so we've got the town office done and we're working on the rec right now, um, to, with our new policies and procedures on it, so we're moving forward on that, that's a good thing, um, and, uh, tightening up on our, uh, key control. Put in there, the PD's doing a lot of, um, and the fire department doing the trunk or treat stuff, as are the trees you already took care of, and that's it, barring your questions.
Sold, was it a F-450?
450 sold, yep, so I sent a message out to, um, Evan, um, Jeff and to, uh, the accountant, cause he, he's dealing with the whole part, just to reach out to him, say, hey, we saw it was sold, what, let's get the ball rolling, um, so, well, we learned, it was lesson learned on the last one. Cause he was, he called him and he's like, uh, Joe did, and he's like, he goes, I'm ready to call and find out, uh, the stolen truck to the police, where, where's the truck? You know, and so, and they said, oh, I'm sorry, sir, we have a check right here for you, and he went and picked the check up, so, it worked.
The van hopefully within the next few weeks at the firehouse, Mike?
Yeah.
Mike says that you're gonna post that one too?
Sure.
Anything you want.
Hopefully within the next few weeks we'll have that stripped out and then, if I can get some more volunteer man hours to get this stuff done.
Yeah, the, the, cause once the, once he's got the lights, so I did call, uh, Adirondack about getting the lights put on or wiring the lights for the pickup truck and, um, and then, um, Evan said he'll undercoat everything once it's all done. That's it, for barring any questions.
Purchase orders?
Um, I actually had a question for Mike, not necessarily on the manager's report, um, Mike, would you touch on your conversation with Pam Swac, or, yeah, Pam Swac?
Pam Clapp.
At Swac? And I got a little something to add to that, but I just want you to relate to the.
I, I missed the last meeting over there, I thought it was a SWIP, uh, Solid Waste Implementation Plan meeting, but, um, so I didn't go to that one, um, but Friday night I talked to Pam Clapp from Swac, um, and she was filling out some forms for hazardous waste and hazardous waste is gonna change, um, they're trying to go after more of these, the, the manufacturers to pay for, you know, paint, light bulbs, batteries, all that stuff, um, and she's had to write a grant for this stuff, so she wanted to include Castleton Hubbardon, and she said, is the town planning on having a special meeting, or are they gonna do this in March? And not speaking for the select board, I just said, um, talking to Nedra, um, we'd get low participation at special meetings and it might not work to the favor of what you want out of this, um, so I told her, I said, uh, maybe it'll be March, um, on the normal meeting, um, so that was it, but we talked about Rutland County Solid Waste District and, um, there, there, I guess, there's other towns that have been talking about going to Swac, but they don't have the capacity, she said, they just, they weren't designed for taking on more. She said the town could go it alone, it could become your own, um, Solid Waste District, um, but I didn't go any farther than that, I'm like blah, 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 um, but, um, so, uh, if the, if that's what you want on the ballot, the ballot article is to shell the town, you know, leave the Rutland County Solid Waste District and join Solid Waste Alliance of Communities, that could be either a special town meeting or at the March regularly scheduled town meeting, so.
I just wanna point out to you guys that it's, it's costing every month that we're in the Solid Waste District, it's costing us somewhere between forty-five hundred and forty-eight hundred dollars a month. So if we postpone it for four months, it's gonna cost the Castleton taxpayers and the Castleton Hubbardon taxpayers, a total of seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars to nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars, so if eighteen grand doesn't mean much to you folks.
Do you think we'd get enough of a turnout though on a special vote for one item?
No, I don't disagree with Mike saying.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this is the kinda money we're talking by postponing it for four months.
I don't think we have a choice, but.
Well.
What is that, is that, so of that, how much is the town and how much is the, the, I say the transfer station, how much is the transfer station versus the rest?
It's about half and half.
Okay.
The transfer station produces like fifty-five percent of the town's tonnage and the private haulers pick up the other forty-five percent, but the taxpayers, they pay that.
It's all, all together, right?
It's all together.
I just look at the transfer station, cause I, I look in at the budget, I was at the, I mean, cause we're, we're still dealing with lack of revenue and recycling.
So just cut those numbers like in half.
Okay.
In either case, whether we do a special election or wait till town meeting day, in either case, it's another year after that before we can change over, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And we're paying both Solid Waste Districts for a year to be, till we can roll out of one into the other.
Also, when we, if we leave Rutland County Solid Waste, the equity we built in that is lost, is that correct?
That, that has not been determined whether that's correct or not.
Okay, fair enough, that's why I'm asking the question, right?
Yeah.
I just wanna have the conversation.
That's our next project, we have to go after that.
Cause we own what, fifteen?
Ten percent.
Ten percent of that building.
Yeah.
Ten percent of all the assets, right?
But that one building is pretty substantial.
Yeah, we can't throw that money away.
No. And let it go away.
Okay, now, anything else, Bob?
No, no, that's enough of that.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four five eight seven to McClure Construction to fix the hot water heater in the fire station for two thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second?
Discussion, all in.
That's, so you're, you're, you were on the fire department, you know, they haven't had hot water over there for years and it's finally, they got hot water, so it took this long.
Actually works now?
Yeah.
No kidding?
Had to replace.
Only been ten years.
If you turn the valve on, it works. Paul did what he told the engineers he had to do in the first place, but they wouldn't believe me.
Oh, so improper installation.
Oversized, it, it was all wrong from the beginning.
What does Paul know about hot water heaters anyways?
I'm just glad it's working.
Have you voted on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was discussion, we're done discussing.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four six seven four to Chestnut Escavating, and that was for a culvert in East Crystal Haven in the sum of three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Second?
I got Mary on that one, Mary Lee on that one. You guys said it at the same time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five four six seven seven to Trees Incorporated for trees on Creek Road to West Castle, Creek and West Castleton to Correl for six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna do Bob on this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is yours, Mark.
Okay. Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054-724 to Brian Billings for tax sale redemption for $4,638.18. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We gotta add something to that, Mike?
Just so you're aware, that was a result of a tax sale. The tax sale forced the person to make their, to make it right, make it whole, and he just got a portion of what they, was owed him, so it worked.
Aye.
I think we all said aye, but just in case, aye.
Make a motion to approve warrant number 1024 for the sum of $64,267.04. Warrant number 1027 for the sum of $504,051.45. Warrant number 1016P for the sum of $20,780.63. And warrant number 1023P for the sum of $21,156.77. Second?
Discussion?
I have a question. I was told by Christine I was going to get a refund on my taxes of fifty-some odd dollars. I don't know where it is, so I don't know what I have to recuse myself from.
I signed the PO, so I don't know if it would be on this warrant.
Does that really affect you any more than it affects any other taxpayers in town?
No, it just do me, I overpaid.
Then I don't, and will that affect your decision one way or the other?
No, it didn't even matter.
You see what I'm saying, does it really, in the grand scheme of things, your recusal, is it really necessary? Is it gonna change anything?
Probably not, no.
Then I don't feel you need to recuse yourself.
Okay.
Does anyone else agree with that?
Yeah, I agree with that. We're not talking $5,000.
No, we're talking...
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm certainly not gonna say nay.
No.
I went through the recusal thing quite thoroughly, back quite a few, I'll sign those in a minute. Oops. Tried to sign that one in my old spot.
Those are nice gloves.
It's really funny because...
I'm sure Rob can make it work.
My hands are warm. I can't sign very well.
Did you say earlier, those are nice Under Armour gloves of March you're gonna take home?
They're very nice, they fit in this pocket quite well.
While you guys are signing that, next, next meeting, I was gonna bring something for the select board again about the transfer station. I'm just waiting for Joe to clear up some stuff on point-of-sale system, but we're still having issues with, you name it, cash, reconciliation, I'm talking like he's not here, because we've had this conversation as we lose the place today, but we're trying to find a point-of-sale system that reduces the amount of times, the times that things get touched up there, because that's where mistakes start happening, is I gotta plug it in this, and then I gotta go over here and type it in over here, and then I gotta print out your receipt for you, and meantime, 20 people are standing at the window going, "Come on, I just wanna pay my $2.50 and get out of here."
Right.
So we're trying to figure out a better way, and it could be adopted for the beach, too.
I'm all for a point-of-sale, but I'm sure you get one that's really gonna work for you, because we have one region that really doesn't give us what it's supposed to give us.
Okay. One of the things, I guess this, we'll pull in the tax, Mary Jo's information, so that those that are residents, if somebody comes up for a permit, whoever's working, it would show that, yes, they're a castle, they pay taxes here, because they don't have to be resident, they have to pay taxes here, basically.
Right.
So that's something we're working on.
So parcels, hopefully, so the renters would be involved, too, because there's renters that come to the transfer station, you know, they're involved to take care of it on patch, so that's, also parcels, hopefully.
I'd love to get rid of stickers up there, and just sell them, let Premier sell them, let Beverage King sell them, and some at the town office, and not up there. You have to buy a full sheet, not one sticker, and they gotta deal with ripping off the sticker and marking it, and it's really a crappy system.
We're in trouble right now, we're doing a spreadsheet, we have our sales slips, we have the cash register, and then all the credit cards and the sticker, the credit cards and the permits all go through Hageone, so you're running four systems up there. It's why mistakes get made, because within the four systems, if they don't all line up, then it looks like everything's off.
We spend, his hourly rate and Megan's hourly rate, sometimes chasing $6.25, you know, just so it makes sense.
You take it out and put it in your pocket, or you take it out of your pocket and put it in the...
Put it in the register, damn it.
I like that last statement, I like that.
Went to work today, lost money.
How does that happen?
Mike, you didn't talk about...
We're gonna...
We're gonna...
I'll bring it up under select board comments.
Okay, okay.
You must have heard me head straight, I was like, "Get rid of this stuff."
Well, I told myself earlier in the meeting that if it didn't come up during manager's report, I was gonna bring it up then.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that warrants are done, select board comments, Mark, do you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Rob?
Nope. Um, this should have been brought up under, yeah, I lost it here, the dedication to the town of work, are we gonna do something for Joe Bruno? Have we done something?
Have we done?
We already have?
Yeah, Joe Bruno, Jonas...
What, last what?
Last year.
It was in last year's?
Yeah, it was Joe Bruno, Jonas, at the...
I remember Jonas.
Yeah.
Remember picture of that, Joe was in last year's.
Yeah.
Picture of him in the ice fishing thing.
Okay, okay, all right. I think that's it for me.
Fine.
Okay, two things, first thing is, for this building, we have an estimate from Fabian Earth Moving to excavate and, hopefully, repair, but at least identify what's going on with the corner of that building where the water's leaching in by the handicap ramp in the gym floor, and we need to get that resolved before the gym floor gets put in. So we have an estimate here of, or a quote, I guess this is actually a quote, right, $56, or $5,360. What that gets us is they dig it out, they waterproof the tar, they tar the wall, waterproof the wall, and they reinstall the catch basin and make sure it's working. So I don't know if anyone's pleasure to do this or not, I know you didn't have, got a lot of notice, I got an email earlier today with this number in it, but that's the first notice I got.
I tried getting more people, Bobby Chestnut, in my email, and Bobby said, "I don't have time for winter," Rick didn't get back to me, and Graham hasn't got back to me.
And there's a catch basin out there, but it's not working.
We're pretty confident it's not working.
We don't know, the catch basin's there, but Heath will, can attest that when the, when the snow back, because the snow comes down off two roofs right there and backs up, it's when it piles up there that seems to be the water coming into the building, and the school knew about it, and they just never really told us, but, you know, he...
Catch basin's an add-on from, sometime before, when we stopped plowing the snow for the school, and they, and they started plowing the snow, and we got the building back, that's an add-on, that catch basin was never up in that corner 25 years ago. Sometime since we stopped plowing the snow here, that that catch basin's been added by the school, it's never was added by the, and ties in...
So you have no idea where it goes?
It, you can see, if you go out there, I happened to look at it when we were moving in the water district the other night, I noticed the cut, there's a cut in the pavement that comes down, and it ties into the storm drain system that goes along with the town storm drain system that goes alongside the building and daylights out back, out back of the building, it ties into, it ties into that system.
We don't know, I talked to Mark Cassidy and to Chris Cole from the school, and Mark said he used to come up and clear the snow away with a little tractor from the elementary school, but it hasn't solved the problem, there's something that's causing the water to get through the brick and concrete. So what I talked to, I had Brad Kendall here from Fabian, he looked at it, he said, "I can't tell you from looking at, from here..."
Try to dig it up.
"Gotta go," and that catch basin's right close to the corner of the building, so, you know, you can't just dig around it, they're gonna have to take the catch basin out, and he said, "We're gonna have to go like 15 feet each side, make sure that everything's good, find, see if we can find if there's anything visibly wrong, and then seal it, and clean it, clean it first, seal it, and then put the catch basin back," and he said, "I don't know how shaped the catch basin's, and if it gets broken, you're gonna have to replace the catch basin." Like, well, the problem's not gonna, it's not gonna get resolved without going through those steps. So whether there's a new floor in there or not, we got water leaking through the side of the building into the gym. So this was the quote from Fabian's that seemed pretty fair, because they're hiring, the person that comes in and does the cleaning and the spraying is not them, they have to bring, and I imagine everybody else would probably do the same thing. I don't think Graham Trudeau or Rick Hall or any of those would do that themselves, they'd probably bring somebody in to do it as well. And if they did, if they did it themselves, it could be open for, I don't know how long, and the, like you said, the paving plant is gonna shut down, the day, right now, it's the day before Thanksgiving, but if we get really bad weather, it could be before then, so I need to get it paved and sealed back up before winter. That's when my back's against the wall to get this thing done.
Well, it's a third of what I thought it was gonna cost, so.
Are we prepared, if it's ugly, when they dig it up, if it's something more?
I think we have to do it, right, I mean, there's not, to dig it up and say it's a really bad problem and bury it back up is not gonna work.
Well, that's what, I mean...
So, but I don't know what the fix is gonna be, depending what they find.
That's what I mean, do we have money if it's really ugly, or can we just make it through the winter here right now and just deal with it? Because my guess is we're not getting the new gym floor this winter, so.
Yeah, well, I don't know that, I mean, they're, when they get $100,000, I'll be chomping at the bit to get things started, but they're halfway there, so it probably won't be this winter, but at least we could find out what's going on with it, and...
So what's a catch basin cost?
That size, I don't know how deep it is, but $1,700, $1,800.
Worst case is they dig it up, the catch basin breaks, we gotta buy a new one when they put it in, in addition to this $5,300.
It would seem like the catch basin's gotta be broken already.
I almost, I almost would expect it would be, but...
Water's staying down there for some reason, right?
You know, the water should be gone down that pipe, if it's not... Either that, or there's a dead body in the, you know, a dead deer or something in the...
Catch basin was probably broken when it was installed.
Are they gonna flush that pipe out when they're in there to make sure that there's not a blockage restricting it from going into where it needs to go?
I'll ask them to make sure that there's no restrictions, the pipe might not even be good, I don't know, until they dig this thing up. It runs from that corner into the middle of that alcove area, that's where the next drain is.
So I can't give you an opinion, I didn't know it was there until last week when we were moving into the fire district.
Do we have the tools to camera that line if we need to? So when they gotta dug up, we can always scope it and see if there's...
We know the water's coming out freely at the other end, that we've seen.
But it's coming from more places than just there.
Yeah, it could be.
We think.
Well, we gotta, we gotta see, so dig it up, let's get it done.
Make the motion, guys, remember to get a motion.
I don't have it in front of me here.
Oh, here, you do, yes, you do.
There you go.
Make a motion to approve the sum of $5,360 to Fabian Earth Moving to repair the water issue at the village school, or the rec center. I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that issue? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second thing is a little bit touchier, but something we've gotta think about because budget's coming up, is a health officer, Jim is hopefully good for another 10 years, Jim Leeny, our health officer, and he's been working with, at no cost.
Yeah, a couple hundred dollars.
Minimal cost. So with the budget cycle coming up for the next fiscal year, we should consider the possibility that we're gonna have to hire someone to either help Jim or replace him. I mean, Jim's, maybe, hopefully he's got many more years in him, but who knows?
He's slowing down.
Man's 93 years old and he's starting to run a little slower.
93?
That's, that's...
I didn't realize he was 93.
God bless him.
So I just wanted to put it on everyone's radar, it's an unpleasant subject, but, you know, God bless him, I've got a lot of respect for Jim, but he just doesn't run in as fast as he used to, so that's something...
You can't get good help for free anymore, I guess, huh? So, shocker, right, Rob?
I wanted to put it on everyone, put it in everyone's mind that this may be the year we have to deal with that, we've known for 10 years that we, sooner or later, we're gonna have to, and I'm thinking that we should direct the town manager to at least put some money on the line item for that budget, you know, so that if we have to hire someone, because he's the deputy.
We've been putting nothing in it?
There's very, it's like $4,000, but he hasn't taken anything.
So how long has he hasn't taken it, then, Mike?
For as long as I've been here, so probably before that.
So we've got $40,000 in the fund, then?
No, that's not the way it works.
Went to general funding chair.
Good try.
That's the way it should work. Yeah, we probably should have started a reserve fund for that kinda, can you do that?
No.
So we actually have $4,000 budgeted?
Yeah, I could tell you exactly what it is, but it's a small amount of money, but he doesn't take it, like, you know, he does mileage payment every once in a while.
You know, so he doesn't take a salary.
Oh, yeah, are we looking at a full-time health officer or part-time?
It'd be nice to have, like, the zoning person, also be the health officer, because they deal with the building stuff, and they're out looking at, so it kinda goes hand in hand, but our zoning administrator has a full-time job, so not, won't work on this case, but that would be really nice.
Those are both two part-time positions, well, would be two part-time positions currently?
Yeah, right now, it's the health officer's at part-time, zoning's part-time, and assessor's part-time.
I just wanted to put it on everyone's radar, and, you know, if you need to change the budget to accommodate the need to hire somebody, then we better plan accordingly, because hopefully it won't be this year, but it could be, or this coming fiscal year, which starts in June of next year, or July of next year.
So it needs to go in there.
Yeah, it needs, you know...
I mean, if he just steps aside, I mean, he's starting to get a little slower, but the budget I bring before the board, the draft on the 10th, well, all I'm gonna do on that one is put the changes to wages, you know, based on the union contracts, the healthcare that we know about, and all the things that we know that are not tools and equipment and all that stuff, just so you can see what that, just those things are gonna bring to, as a increase to the budget.
Well, that's pretty much what you gave us the last time, right?
Yeah, because then I gotta work with each department on the rest, you know, to find...
It was a couple weeks ago you gave us a first shot.
Yeah. No, I didn't, that wasn't, that wasn't this, next year's budget, I gave you the current budget, it was last year's budget, and showing the actuals, and then the current budget. I haven't done a draft yet of next year, so that's gonna take me like three months of Sundays.
All right, that's all I got for select board concerns. Do we have any action items, items we gotta make sure we follow up on, that aren't on Mike's list?
He's got them all.
Mark was gonna tell him to go ahead and start thinking about the bike ramp or the bike jumps, right?
Yeah.
Get him going on that.
Yep.
Do we need an executive session to go over this? We agreed to approve it last meeting, we came out of executive session and...
My contract.
And agreed to ratify his contract, do we need to go into executive session for any reason to discuss this again?
There should be copies in your files to, in your...
I don't think so.
No.
I don't have a reason.
So then...
We haven't changed our mind, I guess.
Yeah.
He makes good secretary.
Do you think we could add that he's gotta be the full-time health officer for no additional money?
Yes.
I'll end up being that anyway, Mark, so it doesn't matter.
What I meant to say in my thing is that he's the deputy health officer, but I don't really think we need to put one more straw in that camel's back, just a thought. So I'm gonna pass this original around for signature, and then, do we need an executive session for anything, Mike? session for anything, Mike?
Um, I don't think so, unless she, the only thing I would, that I would ask if, if you wanted to go in was to give you an update on this building, um, with that, um, contract. But, but I have a meeting with him on Thursday, so maybe it's not, I'll, I'll pull up in the next one.
Yeah, that'd be better. More information.
It's moving okay.
Do we need to, do we need to make an official vote on this?
We already did that last meeting.
We did do, we did vote on it. You said, matter of fact, you made a point of seconding it.
That's right. You did.
Yeah, that's right. You made a big deal out of it.
Made a point of making a point out of it.
You didn't, wouldn't let anyone but you second.
So you were redundantly.
Can't back out now.
Was there stipulations to go along with that?
There was, but I'm not going to tell you what they were.
Okay.
If you don't remember, I'm sorry.
Oh, we just gotta cross it out.
No, I am sixty, so I probably don't remember.
I'll be sixty next month.
I know you will.
Will you be? Really?
They went to school together.
We did. I used, we traded shoes.
Oh, my goddamn sneakers.
Yeah, I read that story.
Eighty-three, right, Michael? Eighty-three? You graduated?
No, I graduated.
I was already out of the Navy by then.
You did.
I did. I wasn't, we weren't in the same class. We, we were in first grade, but thank God to Polton, I got, and I got.
They held you back.
I got to Polton and my sister and myself got held back to like, like, Polton's not the same as Castleton. So we both had to stay back.
You had to be really smart to graduate from Polton, I'll tell you that. I'd already been out of the Navy two years by eighty-three.
Oh, God, you're, you're aging yourself out here.
You know what I just hit last week?
I should be able to figure that out, shouldn't I?
The neighbor's mailbox.
No, I have hit the neighbor's mailbox in thirty years.
Oh, I tried to put you up, because you're the third ranking person. Like longevity.
Probably not happy about it, but.
Oh, um.
I'm happy you did, but you shouldn't be sharing that with us.
Um, I interviewed a guy, a guy today for the board secretary. He wants to do it, and he's got.
Oh, I missed that. What'd you say?
Uh, I interviewed a guy today for the board secretary position. Um, he has plenty of skills to do it, so, um, matter of fact, he even talked to me about other opportunities, but.
You can't say.
I probably shouldn't say it aloud right now.
Okay, I thought you had said a name.
But he, he, he graduated from the university a few years ago. Pete knows him, Justin knows him. We, we did his background check today. Everything's good, blah, blah, blah. But, but he's, uh, he'll be starting on the tenth, it looks like, I have no memory. I can't wait because.
I know, it's ridiculous.
I started these minutes and then I got to like the third thing down and then Christine took it over and it took her all day. I mean, it would take me all day.
All right, it's, uh, anything else?
Can't tell my story?
Not at this point.
All right.
You can tell it after Mary Lee makes her, her motion.
All right.
I make a motion, but we adjourn at eleven oh three.